I'd like to call the meetings order at 7:08 PM on December 7th. Thank you Area 58 for filming tonight. Seeing as there are no visitors, I don't think anybody would like to be in college unless Mr. Keith or...
Actually, I don't know who you want.
Get permission.
Mr. Barry.
Whatever you like to look up. Well, thanks for coming. Did everybody have a chance to look over the minutes from November 2nd?
I had a tiny detail that says Mrs. Joshua was confused. She thought it was lower and I just wanted to clarify that. I was reading two articles.
Six and two.
Did you submit some notes on it?
It's page 7, 3, bullet point 3, under D, D3.
Shush is confused about why we're merging with the standards that she believes are lower level. And I just, I think it's more, I was questioning why we're merging. And it sounds like I have authority and I look at them and I think they're lower. And I was just quoting from other people's opinions. So it started to mean science. They were the ones who said they were lower. So that was the only thing that I wanted to add.
Okay, so how do you want it amended? Do you want to amend it?
Oh, you want to do this. Just that I was questioning, sorry, I was going to ask you please. Questioning why we're merging with the standards that... Through research from, I don't see people that are smart enough to say that. From the scientific community that they were lower level. And I think that I'm big fan of science. Will we read that there?
Mrs. Joshua was questioning why we are merging with a standard that has been shown to be lower than...
That seems a little too definitive for me. That, the standard that some of the scientific community believe is at a lower level.
Okay, I'm okay with that.
Can we maybe repeat the whole sentence just so Kim can knowledge it? Because I think you may have actually used these words. I believe Kim...
Okay.
Yeah, I think you actually used...
I was confused, but just when you take it out of context if you aren't here. I was reading from the perspective of some just being able to not being here. But at the same time, we have to be accurate to it. I mean, if she's sitting behind us talking, doing it as we're speaking. That's our record of the minutes as well as the tape. So to go back and change the meeting after it happened, I don't think that's what the intention of the minutes are.
May I ask, was that a direct quote or was it paraphrasing? Because it was a direct quote, I agree with Casey, but it was paraphrasing. That's open to interpretation of the issue.
Well, I think she's got a tough job to do. She's got a very tough job.
She's doing a great job of it.
And we, we're taking all that long conversation and that's it. I'm just, when I read it from new eyes, it looks like I'm the one that has the opinion. I just wanted to state that I had, I was, you know, quoting other people. Does that make sense?
Would it be possible if we held these minutes and then perhaps somebody could repeat the actual tape to see if it was a direct quote or if it was paraphrasing? Again, if it was a direct quote.
But even if it's a direct quote, if it's taken just one sentence out of the whole conversation. It's, she's trying to get the essence of everything that was said.
Yeah, but I mean, we can start.
Can you, can we go back to that one sentence you had?
Sorry?
Rob, could we go back to the sentence you came up with? I'm wondering if we left the first sentence, which was, I think, said, and then added clarification? Maybe that would be a way of doing it. Because again, it was a longer conversation, absolutely.
Absolutely.
It was a very long conversation. And you had great language. What was it you said?
I said something to the effect that we defend that some of the scientific community believe is a lower standard or something.
It's a lower.
Would that, would that be more...
Sorry, just close the page now.
I wrote it as you were talking and I wrote, "Mrs. Joshua was questioning why we are merging with a standard that some of the scientific community believes is at a lower level."
That sounds fine, yeah. Are you comfortable with that? Okay. Did you get that, Kim? I'm sorry, do you mind one more time slowly?
"Mrs. Joshua was questioning why we are merging with a standard that some of the scientific community believes is at a lower level." Is your name spelled right, by the way?
My name is not.
Because it looks like O and the I are flipped for me, but I just, it's not my name, so I don't know.
No, it's right.
Okay, good. Other than that, I didn't see anything else in here that I needed to...
Motion to approve the November 2nd, 2015 minutes amendment.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, aye, by the way. Warrants are circulating. I must confess, I have not had time to go to town hall and get any of the school committee correspondence, so I apologize for that. Okay, okay. I thought you wanted to leave it to the end. Okay. We received an email from Steve Rowesi regarding a long-term subposition in the library. And we'll be talking about that during executive session tonight. Okay? Steve Rowesi, who is the, he's the president of the Teachers, Health and Teachers Association. And he sent an email regarding the...
Just a long-term sub...
The long-term subposition.
Yes.
And we'll be discussing it during executive session tonight. The unfinished business would be the energy efficiency project. Is Mr. Bowdre going to speak to that?
Yes.
I can do that. The, as we know, the thermostat project is completed. And as of right now, on December 3rd, the lighting project did begin. So they started with the exterior lights outside and they were redoing the time clocks to set them up. So they're all on a digital battery now. So that is exciting news. They did actually start, so it has begun. And they also replaced the ballast in the bulbs with LEDs. Right now, they're a yellow color, but they will be changing them if we would like to a more white color.
Okay.
It's moving along.
Awesome.
At least it's moving ahead. No. That's all I got.
Okay, sounds good. New business, the MASC/MASS joint conference review. I just kind of briefly wanted to say that I went to the conference. It was fantastic. I think that, as Casey has mentioned before, that everybody, if they have the opportunity to go, should go. It was really very informative. There was too many sessions for me to attend all of them. But a lot of them were very, very good, a lot of interaction, a lot of conversation between different school committees and how they do things and don't do things and what's worked for them and hasn't worked for them. The keynote speaker on the Friday, I believe it was, was fantastic. I'm probably going to butcher his name if I try to say it. I have it written down. He was great, though. He was from China and I believe he got his PhD here in the United States. And his kids, you know, he now lives here. His name's Yong Zhao. Does that sound right?
It does, yes. I wasn't there for it, but for that one, I was there on Thursday. But yes, that's his name.
It was fantastic. And it was all, it was all about how, he kind of jokingly said how America gets education wrong, basically. Because we're heading down this path of trying to standardize everything and cookie cutter our children. And he personally believes that that's moving backwards from the way that we should be, you know, educating our kids. And, you know, our kids don't fit in boxes and a lot of things that we've all talked about before. And how we actually need to stop comparing ourselves to other countries because we don't operate like other countries do. And we need to kind of, you know... Well, one thing he really said that I thought was fantastic was when he was talking about kindergarten assessments. And he said that kids shouldn't be prepared for kindergarten. Kindergarten should be prepared for our kids. And I thought that was really very like...
That's a great quote.
It was.
That's a great quote.
And so I, and he was all about, you know, instead of preparing our children for jobs and we should prepare them to create jobs and to be entrepreneurs. And, you know, it's one of the things that makes this nation great is all the small businesses we have. So that was fantastic. And there was a conversation with Desi about the MCAS Park testing and Common Core in the state, which I went to, obviously. And I thought I would be in the minority, but in fact, I was not. I was shocked at the number of people who stood up and were in opposition to the direction that Desi is taking in our education. And there were a few, few very upset teachers and school committee members that don't like the park system and don't like, you know, where we're going. And, and the question was asked several times of the board as to where these internationally benchmarked standards are that they're comparing this new curriculum to. And they could not answer the question. And I found that pretty telling. And so there was that. Then I went to like the thing about, you know, being a chair and Robert's Rules of Order and all kinds of other things. But yeah, and there was also a presentation on budget and finance. And I thought that it would be a good idea, and they've done this in other towns, where they had sort of like a budget 101 session where their budget guy, as they were affectionately calling that person, which would be Christine for us, sort of took a meeting, whether it be an extra meeting or rolled it into a school committee meeting and made like a budget breakdown of just the very basics. Like how the budget works, where our money comes from, what percent comes from the state. You know, locally with our property taxes, what percent comes from the federal government, grants, things like that. Just like a very basic overview. And I thought it would be beneficial for us, for new school committee members and, you know, even myself included, that don't necessarily understand like the inner workings of the budget, just to get an overview of it.
I think Christine would need to work with Sandy, the town treasurer. Because Christine, because of the way we're set up as a district, Christine knows our budget. She doesn't know the town side of it.
Right.
So when we're talking about, you know, net school spending or what Halifax actually gets in state aid or stuff like that, Christine might not have all of those numbers. But Sandy Nolan, the town treasurer, definitely would have those. So I think if you want to do something like that, it's going to be something that's kind of joint between the two. Because we're not a K-12 district.
Right, right. And somebody did mention that, that was in a regional district, that they actually put together like a meeting with a person from the PTO, a selectman, finance committee member, the town accountant, the budget guy, the school committee, and just all sat down and just, you know, it wasn't like a, really a conversation. It was more of a, this is how things work, you know? So I thought that was a really good idea. And I didn't know if anybody would be open to doing that. I know we all don't want another meeting. But with budget season coming up, I thought it may be beneficial if we entertain the idea.
I'd agree with that, just because, you know, there's, when we talk at our level, we don't talk about state aid. We don't talk about what the town's getting from the state for our budget. And that just goes for our K-6 students, the state aid that we get at this level. It does go in support of the out-of-district special ed students that we have. The town receives that money also. So there's different pieces of it that we don't always talk about at this level.
Yeah. I mean, the whole like sped budget component in and of itself to me is like, took me a while. I still don't fully understand, you know what I mean? Like I just, and the vocational piece of it, I mean, there's so many moving pieces.
Yes. You know, and for out-of-district vocational, even though we are a K-6 building, because we're a regional school system, those students that want to go to a vocational school that's not our high school, they live in our budget. And I know it's hard for people to understand, but because we don't have a 712 system that's just Halifax, we pick them up here because we don't want to combine them regionalized. Because, you know, when we think about it, Plington has so many kids in out-of-district. Kingston has so many kids in out-of-district. And the last term I checked, they both have way more than we have in Halifax. So we don't want to do that as a share cost because it would cost us so much more. So it makes more sense to do it the way you do it.
Well, even just understanding that, what you just said, like, I didn't know that before. You know what I mean? I was always like, why are we paying for these high school kids? And that's why, you know?
Because if we did it as a share cost, it would cost the town in Halifax more.
Right, right.
So, and then there's pieces that, you know, you pick up from being here long-term. We don't want to say over many, many years. But those pieces come as you sit here and you understand more and more of it. Going to the conference, you know, attending silver-like meetings and listening to them talk or even watching them on TV, it really gets you to the point where you can understand how the different pieces work.
Yeah.
But I do agree that having different players in it. I wouldn't do it in the school committee meeting.
Yeah, probably not, no.
If you want to do it, it should be a separate meeting.
I agree, I agree. Maybe I will just send out an email and see if anybody's interested and see what they say and go from there.
Sure.
And when it works for everybody, probably after the holidays.
Probably, like, why don't you give us a couple of days so we can see what... I think you need to contact the players first.
Look, that's what I mean, like, and see if they're interested in doing it, participating. Yeah, start with that and then, and then go from there.
Because all of the different players have different meetings that they have to do actually.
Just a couple.
Just a couple. Well, I'm thinking about, you know, I know Sandy attends every finance committee meeting. You know, so doing it on a school committee, I know she's across the street.
Right.
You know, Christine is going to be at every school committee meeting for the next few months. So those different pieces.
Right. And it may be a way of, when we present the budget in January, of at least trying to incorporate some of the information in that presentation as a first draft. You know, I can, I can think a little bit about that. Again, I'm not sure to Casey's point, we'll be able to talk as much about the revenue. But that could be something that could handle through the finance committee.
Okay. Oh, you put that on.
I did.
So I added this little piece to the agenda about future agenda items. Because I, I just wanted to give people an opportunity to, you know, to say if there's something that they have on their mind that they would like to discuss at a future meeting. The point of ha, I just want to reiterate this, that the point of having this bullet on the agenda is not to have a discussion about what's going to be on the upcoming agenda. It's just to, like, for instance, Linda wanted to talk about digital privacy. So that would be her opportunity to say, next month, I want to talk about digital privacy. Can we please ask so-and-so to come to the meeting? That's it. So if anybody has anything on their mind that they want to talk about this January meeting, this is your opportunity.
But we can still contact them at a later date.
Absolutely.
I want to make that clear that, you know...
No, this isn't the only window that you have. I just, you know, sometimes things pop in your head between.
That's going to be a quickie meeting, isn't it? On the January meeting?
Oh, yeah, we'll only present the budget. Help people.
Because we're a special town meeting.
Well, and that's the other thing.
Wait, there's a special town meeting.
There's only one special town meeting.
They just started talking about it.
Oh, really?
Last week. They talked about it.
The 23rd.
Do you know what's on the agenda on there?
Wait, no.
I have no idea. Are you serious?
It's in January 4th.
Yeah.
Right. And I think there's supposed to be three articles on it and it's supposed to be a...
Oh, I thought, when you said the 23rd, I was like, no.
No, they talked about it at the November 23rd meeting.
Okay, 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 yes.
So it should be a half hour meeting then?
We might need to move the time back. I didn't know there was a meeting scheduled.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was actually going to ask you about that.
I, no one contacted me, I'm sorry.
I just found out about it today.
What, do you think you're like important or something? Sorry. No, I'm just kidding.
So is it 7:30 or 7?
Um, I believe it's 7:30, but you might want to contact Charlie.
He's, he's so good about telling me everything, I'm surprised.
So maybe they should meet at 6:30?
That's not going to give us enough time for budget presentation.
I'm thinking a 6.
6, okay.
It's a first introduction of the budget.
Okay.
And then that's what I'm concerned about, is having enough time for administration to give us the details of the budget. Does everything else? So...
Will you be able to make that? No, that's the only thing.
I'm going to have to. Okay. Yeah, no, that's fine.
Could be adjourned and then pick it up again after town meeting if it's quick.
If we have to, but I'd rather do that. Actually, town meeting will be quick, though.
Should be.
It should be.
It should be.
And I want to have should be enough for the beginning.
Oh, right, forgot about that.
So...
I don't know if I have one scheduled.
Would it make more sense to change our meeting time?
Well, that was my other thought.
I'm not sure I can. I have an awful lot of meetings in January. But we could try. Can we try at 6:00 and we can always add in one if we have to?
Yes.
If we don't get through it?
Yes. I better put that in my little phone right now because otherwise I will forget.
So I'd like to make a motion to change our meeting time for our January 4th meeting to 6:00 PM.
Second.
I just have to do this at around 6:00.
Okay. We'll fill you in. We'll fill you in. All those in favor of changing the meeting time to 6:00 PM?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, attention. Where are we going to meet? In here?
Here's a...
Okay, yeah, because it's still a meeting. All right, reports of standing committees. So policy is first. We had a policy meeting.
Did you say I did not attend the...
Casey wasn't there. That's okay, you can't get to everything, you know?
I'm fine.
You do.
She made the first one.
Yeah, did I miss the first one?
You missed the first one. You missed the second one.
But you know what?
Between you, you were perfect.
So we did the, wait, so this is actually the first reading?
That's correct.
Not what we did was first.
That's correct.
Okay, so this will be the first readings of the policy, EBC, ECAF, IJND, IJNDB, IJNDC, and JKAA. Would you like to speak to them?
I make a motion to waive the readings of each of these policies from... Or...
Waive the actual reading.
Waive the actual reading of the policies. Just do the time course rate. Some of these policies are pages and pages long. They do go into as a attachment to the minutes.
Can I make an amendment to that, though? And just make sure that there's a copy that's available for anyone in the public who might want to read it?
Sure, sure.
Can it go up on the website or...
If you'd like.
As a PDF?
Then you can just mark the draft.
Sure, yeah, that's a good idea.
They haven't totally been accepted yet. But in order to read all these pages, we'd probably spend the next half hour.
Did you want to go over this one?
I'd be happy to go over it. Yep, I'd be...
Do we have to vote on it?
Yes, she's just doing her way of doing it.
No.
Yeah, we have to vote to waive the reading.
To wait, that's right.
Yeah, so we can second that.
And I made an amendment to it.
Yep.
So...
I'll accept your amendment as part of my original motion.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
No, you got to say second.
Oh, second, I'm sorry.
And then she says, all those in...
Casey's motion amended by Robert Slater. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, attention.
So thank you for waiving the actual reading. As Casey said, otherwise we would be here for about an hour, even though I can speak reasonably quickly. So what you have before you are the policies which were recommended by the National Association of School Committees. Twice a year, approximately, they review the policy manual. Our entire manual was designed by the MASC. It was reviewed by all the school committees. They periodically send us updates based on new laws and regulations that are coming through. In our policy manual, our procedures for anyone new or for the public is that there is a policy subcommittee meeting, which is made up of members of each of the different, each of the different school committees, all four school committees. They meet, they review the policies, they make any changes that they feel are appropriate. And then it's brought forward to all four school committees. There's a first reading, which is what we're having tonight. It is a time for you, and you were sent these ahead of time. You were, it's a time for you to look these over if you have any questions, if you have any concerns. Also, you have all month before we do the next reading. After the second reading, they are officially adopted and become part of the policy manual. Okay? So right now, all of these are in draft. It's your opportunity to read them over. Again, you have these as an email attachment. Also, Lisa sent these out to you, maybe within the week, I'm not sure the exact day. The policies are recommended by the school committee, which is your governing body, basically, MASC. The policies revolve around, the first one is the one that someone was referring to, and that's the updated physical restraint policy. That's based on a change in the law which goes into effect in January of 2016. So this is very specific to language in the law. This one, I'm particularly concerned about having it approved by the January school committee because we also are going through a coordinated program review. And it's very important that our policy manual models the state laws. That's really one of their mandates. It's important for us to not get cited for that. So this is something that is one that I'm particularly concerned about time-wise. We have met, reviewed the policies that were recommended by the school committees, MASC. We've made some changes. We met with our technology director who made some additions. Our lawyers have reviewed them and he made some language changes also. You have before you the actual newsletter, which you all receive as part of the school committee. You have their recommendations here. You have highlighted in yellow, it says current policy. That's what is in our policy manual at this time. You then have the policies at the back that were recommended by MASC. You then have a separate set of documents, and I'm sorry to all the trees I've killed, which have redlined any changes that the subcommittee recommended, okay, with language. And they're highlighted in red and they have the little trackings, track changes on the side. So it's, it's a complete set of documents. It is long, it is unwieldy. Again, I'm not sure if everybody's had an opportunity to read them. Policy is an important piece. It is posted online. Everyone can see the policy manuals. I know Bob and Rob had suggested posting them online. We always post them once they're accepted and approved. Normally, I don't, we have not in the past posted draft policies. I don't believe there's a reason we couldn't. But they are your policies. But if you would like to recommend or ask us to do that, I believe we can do that. And just put the word draft on it. I think, actually, I'm going to correct myself. I think when we were doing the bullying, we may have posted that online as a draft. So that's pretty much it in a nutshell, what the policy manuals are. I don't know if anyone has any questions of the process or procedure.
Just having the red lines.
The red lines are this document here. It are the ones that the subcommittee, the policy subcommittee, recommended as changes from the MASC versions.
So what you're asking us to approve as our first read tonight is the document with the red lines and...
Changes, exactly. Yep. So this, good point, Casey, thank you. So these, this smaller packet is, is what you're being asked to approve or look at as a first reading. This document is the history.
Right.
Is probably a good way of looking at it. That's probably a better way of explaining it.
All set? Yep.
So a motion to approve policies, EBC, ECAF, IJND, IJNDB, IJNDC, and JKAA as a first read.
Who said aye?
I normally don't. I usually list them out, that way there's no confusion that it's on tape, it's in our minutes. It's, so nobody...
It's all there, yep.
I can second you.
You second it, Bob second it.
Or we can say a first read, right? Aye.
Okay, all those in favor of Casey's motion regarding the policies?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, attention.
And if you have any questions or concerns, Casey or someone could answer them because they, between them, attended both meetings. And you can always ask me also. And then in January, we'll revisit these and approve them as a second reading. Okay? If there's something that you want to talk about in between, just let me know.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
I don't believe in negotiations as much.
No.
No, right? Pilgrim area collaborative, Casey?
Pilgrim area collaborative, there was no earlier meeting. And our next meeting is the 12th.
Maybe.
Youth and Rec?
Youth and Rec, um, had a very successful craft fair over the weekend. We don't have numbers yet, specifically how much money they raised. I'm trying to get those from you during our next meeting. Youth and Rec will have a presence. I believe they're going to have a...
Uh, Youth and Rec will have a, a presence. I believe they're gonna have a table during, um, holiday Halifax next weekend. Not much else is scheduled. Um, there is the month of the holidays, so that's about it.
Thanks, Rob. P T O?
P T O, I attended the meeting on November eighteenth. I was very happy to see so many parents there. I was really excited. A new parent, kindergarten parent, so it was really nice to be with. They are still talking about looking for a new, uh, P T O going through their bylaws, their term limits for each of those positions, and the way it worked out with our current board, they're all on the, you know, the year. So they're looking for people to shadow, the people who are already there. Um, so if anybody's interested, um, please contact Law &amp; Laws, um, because they do need leadership. Having been involved with myself, it, it really isn't as big of a time commitment as you think it is, so if you're interested, please contact them. Breakfast with Santa will be December twelfth, yeah, December twelfth, beginning at eight A M.
Eight thirty.
Eight thirty A M. They're still selling raffle tickets.
Right.
You can purchase them at.
You can purchase them at.
Purchase them at, they were doing advanced, but since it's so much later, so you can purchase raffle tickets. They have pictures with Santa Claus. Um, you're not gonna be able to get your picture right that day anymore, but there's, Santa's still with you. There's the shopping. It's one of their biggest fundraisers, so anybody's interested, come have breakfast with Santa. They have upcoming fundraisers. They're gonna do a clothing gala, Providence Bruins in the spring. Country Rentals Christmas Free fundraiser, which I believe the emails went out already. They have some proposed fundraisers that talking about for the future, which is a pizza bowl, movie nights, bingo nights, different things that people are interested in. Ongoing collections, box tops. For those of you out there, if you're interested in cutting your box tops, um, it's one of their fundraisers. Pretty easy one. Most general mills, but Betty Crocker products, have little box tops on them, cut them out. I believe they're still, Rock Blossom Library in the building. But if they're not there, we could, um. Drop them off at the school. Every ten cents really helps the P T O support our programs. That's about it.
Is the next one, uh, today or?
The next meeting is Wednesday, January twentieth at seven P M. I'm going to the game.
So I probably. It would be, um, morning, I believe, right?
You know, they, they. They said it wasn't a, every other kind of thing. It's just, so. I will, um. Put it on my calendar, so.
If the next one's in my, I'll see if I can get some.
It's okay. I really don't want. It keeps me, uh, in, informed about what's going on, and that's part of it. I mean, I don't.
Thank you, Casey. Capital budget, which is the M S B A update, which is the roof, right?
Yes.
So do we want to talk about the joint meeting? We didn't, you didn't have like, you're, what?
I was really confused coming out of that meeting. As we've been talking about.
Wait, let's say what the meeting was, so everybody knows. So the, you talking about the joint meeting?
See, when you say joint meeting.
The big meeting.
So we had a, a townwide.
Charlie's meeting.
That, um, Charlie Sealy could ask for, and Charlie was there. I'm gonna try to go around the room. Sandy Nolan was there, Tom Millius, the selectman, was there, Gordon Andrews, finance committee, was there. Mel, huh?
Yep.
Finance committee was there. Summer was there. I was there. Kim Roy was there as a selectman. Jerry Elliott was there as the town maintenance.
John.
John Campbell was there from the municipal and school building committee. Joy was there. Christine was there.
Kate was there.
Kate was there. Matt Turkey, our head custodian, was there.
Sandy Nolan was there?
Yeah.
Oh, you did, Sandy, okay.
I think, uh, it was a lot of people.
There was quite a few people, and we had a good mix of all the concerned parties from across town departments. And it was really more of a question and information than any decision-making body. And we had talked at our last school committee about a capitalist. And that was talked about at the meeting, and the town is talking about trying to roll all the projects into one submission to the M S B A. So the questions that I think came out of the meeting are, can we in fact apply to both the accelerated repair program and the core program? And Joy's having a lovely conference webinar, um, Wednesday at ten A M. Um, and it was decided to do it here in Halifax, because that's where most of the people are going to be. So there's still questions about what we're gonna do and how we're gonna go forward. We're hoping that some of the questions are gonna be asked, answered in the webinar.
Yes.
And Charlie and Joy are going to touch base after that and see.
Charlie put together all the questions from the meeting, and I forwarded them to the M S B A, well, the M A S S, who's putting on the webinar. The Mass Association of School Superintendents puts on webinars periodically on key issues. And I noticed that there was one on the M S B A process, so I signed up immediately for it, and I invited the town if they were interested in participating. And they were, they were thrilled to be able to do that. So I'm holding it here, so anyone from the town can just walk over. So, um, hopefully, we'll be able to get some of the questions answered. You know, previously, John had applied during the core program, but we were only applying for the roof. When you're only applying for the roof, it's an accelerated program. It's, it's smaller in scope. Core program is like head to toe. When we met, I think what Casey was confused about, what I was confused about, and I, and I don't know, I, I don't want to speak for Summer, but we were surprised at the scope the town was interested at, looking at the building. Not that it doesn't all need to be done, but the town, the people in the rooms' general feeling, I believe, was that it would be better to bring it all forward at once. You know, and do it all in a, um, in one motion at town meeting, um, rather than dribble and drab in, you know, because the siding is falling apart, the windows are leaking, we've got the roof. The building is old, and so the feeling was, it would be better to just try to apply for all of it, while we could get some grant funding. So we'll see what information we get at the webinar. Hopefully, some of our questions will get answered, because the accelerated is due in January. So it would be really helpful if I had answers to some of the questions.
Right, and I think that the, the accelerated is due in here, so. And I, I guess this is part of where we, we really need some direction is.
Absolutely.
From the town.
It, I don't know if it's due in January, might open in January, but I think.
It's due mid-February, mid-February at the end.
So we're gonna have to have motions for the statements of interest if we're gonna do the accelerated program. But the motions can be later, because I believe the core program is, the due date is.
April.
The application for April.
Yeah.
So it, it really is one of those things where it's one thing if we go with the accelerated program, and it's a different thing if we go with the core program.
Right.
And if we can do both.
And then if we can't do both and see who gives us money.
Well, i- it's not, in a way, the M S, the, M S B A works, there's no town is guaranteed money, and that's right there, right in center when you, you go on their website. So you can apply, and they might say, yeah, no, we're not interested in helping. So, and that's one of my concerns with the whole thing, is, you know, we need to know what we need to do and get it in, and, because we need to do something about the roof. We all acknowledge the roof is sinking. It's old. It needs to be repaired in your place.
So you're going to have to vote, see who wants to get further.
We have to find out what the parameters are. That's the question. Hopefully, the webinar will answer, because that's the basic question. You know, we're just not sure. As I said, we thought we were on the right track for accelerated, but at this meeting, when they started listing all these other items, it may be a core program.
Right, and I'm not sure that, you know, the accelerated program will consider the siding as part of what their scope is, and that's where.
Yeah, I don't believe so, but we'll find out.
Forgive me for asking you a question, but who's ultimately, um, responsible for making the decision to which direction it goes? It's, the town's, uh, the.
Really, you know, we, we have to take into consideration what the town is looking for for us to do. But when it comes down to the statement of interest, we need a vote from this committee, and we need a vote from the voter selectmen. Okay, so in order to move forward, whether it's the accelerated program or the core program, we kind of all have to be on the same page. And we all have to go to town meeting at some point in the future and say, this is what we need for money.
And defend our decision.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And the, and the town has to be supportive of it, or we'll never go through.
Yeah, we can't have, you know, other boards in the town standing up saying that they don't support what we're, I mean, we can, but ultimately, it would be better if we didn't.
It, it's, it's not conducive.
It's a lot of money.
It is, and if the highway surveyor stands up, and I'm not picking on the highway surveyor, I just pulled that one out. So forgive me, Bob, I'm really not. But if the highway surveyors, you know, should have been coming, it's a no, that doesn't need to be done. It's not.
How do we argue that, yeah?
So, it really is important that we work with the town. You know, and it, we're not talking about anything that wasn't presented to us, the school committees, we're talking about the siding, we're talking about the dollars, we're talking about the roof. The roof is the biggest piece of this. But all of that was on our capital list, is what we were talking about, and they're, the town showed us, you know, instead of breaking it up piecemeal year after year, that they would prefer to see as a cohesive.
Yeah, big chunk project, I guess.
Yes.
And, and I, I mean, I can see the point that it's, in terms of, uh, it being more palatable, I guess, i- i- in, on town meeting floor. Just coming back every year and saying, we need, now we need this money, now we need that money, and it's like, you know, so, oh, maybe this is the better route. But we'll know a lot more after the webinar.
Yep, hopefully.
Billy in safety?
We have good news. I finally got a commitment from the fire chief. He's gonna be here for the February meeting. He's gonna talk about the fire marshal regulations, uh, emergency drills, evacuation procedures, and things like that.
Excellent, thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
He is a good guy, and he, uh, he's good at applying for grants and saving the town money, things like that.
He's a really good guy.
Absolutely.
Um, Union Thirty-One, we have not met.
Oh, admin review.
Oh. Oh, I wrote right under it. Okay, admin review, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
That hasn't met either.
Admin review met today.
That's what we're doing right now.
Aren't I on my phone?
No.
Oh, I was.
Admin review met today at six thirty. Um, we approved the superintendent's goals. You all have a copy. The only change we made, and Joy brought these with her tonight, and we changed them a little bit. Under fiscal management, the key actions, we just switched numbers one and two. So number one will be develop timeline for the budget building process.
Okay.
And number two will be invite selectmen and finance committee members to a summer school committee meeting.
We're just gonna flip one into.
Okay.
Okay, um, we did come up with a basic timeline for the evaluation of the superintendent. We have decided that we would like to have the evaluating, uh, with, evaluation document back to the chair of admin review by the first week in April, so that they can be compiled and, uh, meeting held before town elections.
Okay. When is the evaluation's gonna be handed out?
What we decided was we were going to send out a draft of the evaluation document, so that you could use it as a working document. The official evaluation documents will be sent out the first week in March, and that will give school committee members a chance to, um, have a month to fill it out and return them. But having the evaluation document as a working document will allow school committee members to think about what's in the evaluation as you're moving forward, and go attending meetings, and subcommittee meetings and stuff, and give you an idea. I would ask that you read the evaluation document all the way through before you fill it out, because certain pieces fit better in certain places, um, just from my experience with it, and from what a member of admin review had said. So that's the basic timeline, so those evaluation documents will probably, will get Lisa to send them over.
January, sure.
Probably, yeah, I will probably send it out before the holidays, because it's just gonna get a rush.
Yeah.
So probably in, in early January. And we did reorganize tonight, and there is a new chair. That would be me.
Waiting.
But, you know, it's, it's one of those first things.
And she was actually there.
I have a little bit of time now, so I will be doing a little bit.
Awesome. Thank you.
And just so everybody knows, as you're going through the evaluation, if you have any questions, you can always contact myself or another member of admin review. With your questions, and we will try to help as best we can. Please don't contact the superintendent about a role that I need to have.
Thank you, Casey. And Union Thirty-One?
No meeting.
I thought mine, okay.
Mr. Bowery would like to hear your, uh, principal's report.
Yes. Don't do. It's a busy month, November. You want to have a copy? It's like the second page in there. Some brief talking points. So enrollment is five hundred forty students, kindergarten through grade six, and the last time we spoke in regards to staffing, we were in the process of hiring various, um, staff members. So we are proud to say that we have hired a point nine art teacher, Kim Seager. She started on November twenty-third, which was also Francine Minehold's last day that she was here in the district, so. She had her, Kim had her first full week last week, and she did a wonderful job, so we're, we're glad to have her. She has stepped in nicely and is taking on the role, so we're glad to have her. We also hired a night shift custodian. His name is Josh Viley. He started mid-November, November sixteenth. He's replacing Al McLean, who was here over twenty-plus years. He is also a Silver Lake graduate.
And he's a night shift custodian?
He is the night shift custodian. He is.
Okay. I'm just curious.
Lives locally, so we're, we're glad to have him on as well. And then the long-term special ed sub is, her name is Jean Grasso. She started the week of November twenty-third. She's filling in for Betty White Rose in grade two. So she has been with us. Um, she's adjusted quite nicely and has been doing a great job, so we're glad to have her on board as well. The timeframe is indefinite, depending upon Betty White Rose's return. The, we had, also had American Education Week, November sixteenth. We had an incredible turnout. We, we kept track of how many people came in, and we, we tracked four hundred and sixty-five people that came in through throughout the week, which was, was impressive. We just were kind of trying to see how many people were coming in for each of the grade levels. So what happens is, each grade level plans an activity, and then the families come in at that particular time. So grade six, they did a, um, bread baking activity, where all the families came in and they baked the bread. They mixed it in their classrooms, and then they brought it down to the cafeteria. Grade five had an animal habitat project that they did in the all-purpose room. Grade four did a wax museum. So each grade level had a really solid activity from kindergarten all the way through grade six, and so we had a huge turnout. So close to five hundred people that came in through the week. It was really good. We're glad to have that. We also had our second fire drill. That was actually planned for a lockdown drill initially, but there was a conflict in our schedules with the police chief, so we're gonna push that back, hopefully, to some time in the springtime. But we ended up doing a fire drill, and we actually cut down our time by over one minute, which was great, so.
A minute, you know, when you're talking about that, it may not feel like a long time, but when you're talking about getting all of these students out of the building.
It was. It was great. After the first time, the police, the, the fire chief came in, he's, he kind of gave us some tips and pointers on what he wanted us to do, and we kind of talked with staff and students. what he wanted us to do and we kind of talked with staff and students about what we needed to do and cut off a minute. So it was great to have that.
That's awesome.
Well, thank you. Thank students and staff. Also, we, I don't know if you mentioned the grade six pie fundraiser that we did have this month, which was another huge success. We haven't, this was a new company that we went with and it was a lot of work and I think that they really did do a great job. They took it over from PTO, I believe. They did. So, um, it's great. They did a wonderful job.
There's no wireless pies anymore?
No. I don't know. Can, do you know what? It's, they delivered everything on time. It was there. It was organized. They did a nice job. So. Term one report cards are going out on Monday, December four, fourteen. Teachers have had a, a few days to work on them to familiarize themselves with the new report cards uh, because they are brand new K through five. So we've been talking a lot about them over the last couple of months. So hopefully there won't be any surprises. But, uh, if anyone does have any questions, you can ask Brian or myself or even Melissa Farrell. She's readily available if anyone has any questions about it. And upcoming dates, December, we have holidays in Halifax.
Yeah, I think they're on the twelfth.
It is on the twelfth.
It's on the twelfth.
Yes.
It doesn't, doesn't there, isn't there an event on Friday that just kind of kicks it off? No? All right. I was hoping for that.
He just tried that.
Maybe it was my own bad, preparing myself for it.
Oh, we, we will be here on Friday, next weekend, that's setting up.
Set up. That's what it is. All right, my bad. Sorry about that post. And then the breakfast with Santa is obviously the next morning on the twelfth at eight thirty. Uh, like I said, the report cards go home on the fourteenth. On the seventeenth is the winter concert. And then on the twenty-fourth, the holiday vacation begins. So.
No school on the twelfth?
No school, yes. No school. That's all I have.
Okay, uh, Ms. Porter?
Hello.
Hi.
Um, so I wanted to start off by letting you know that, um, on Wednesday, so starting off with school accountability data release schedule. On Wednesday, this coming Wednesday, December ninth, the official results for school level of accountability data will be released to the public. Tuesday, December eighth, tomorrow, districts and schools will have the opportunity to preview the data first. However, it is still considered embargoed with the official release being on the ninth. So even though we will have access to it, we are still not allowed to share it publicly until the ninth. Um, we have had access to the preliminary results, but it will actually be the, we'll have tomorrow to look at what they're calling the official results before the official release on Wednesday. So, so as soon as that gets released, then we will be receiving the reports, um, to be sending home to families. And I will let you know when, when those, um, come as well. Um, I'm wondering if I can just jump to number three and number four to get those.
Can I, did, did families already get their students' reports on how they did?
Yes.
They did?
Yes. Yes, they did.
I'm having a senior, I don't actually get those.
Yes. Yeah.
But so that information already went.
That information went home.
Accountability.
Yes. So this is just saying what level we are going to be. Whether we are level one, remain a level two, if we move to level three, level four, level five. Um, so I was, what, is it okay if I move to three and four before, and then I'll go back to number two?
Mm-hmm.
Um, so coordinated program review, I just want to let you know that, um, again, I, as we mentioned before, we are getting audited by the state. Uh, this happens once every six years. Um, and how, and they are coming to our district four times. Once for Halifax, once for Kingston, once for Plimpton and once for Silver Lake. Instead of viewing us as one, they're viewing us as four separate entities. So we, right, because we are. Um, however, many of our documents are very similar and things like that. We still have to present everything four separate times. So they are coming to look at our special education, English language education, civil rights and Title One. Um, civil rights and Title One are a desk review, um, but they will be looking more thoroughly through especially our special education, um, and also our English language education, which they're calling ELE. And if I, one of the acronyms pages that I had mentioned should have that on there. But it's associated with ELL, our ELLs, our English language learners. Um, they are coming, Halifax gets the, the, um, the excitement of having the first visit. So, um, they, the, the state representatives from, from Department of Elementary and Secondary Education will be joining the Halifax community, um, the week of January eleventh. Um, they start off by having a file review. They'll be, um, reviewing files, special education files. They'll be reviewing all of our English language learner files because we are considered a small incident, a low incident district. Um, and we do have a list of the students that they're reviewing for our special education files. They also will be walking through the building. Um, Kane will have the opportunity to give them a tour. Um, and they will be interviewing staff as well as some parents. They will be notifying the parents. So if parents receive, um, a letter in the mail, um, that's because they were randomly selected to have the interview. They will be interviewing parents of, um, students that have IEPs as well as English language learners. Also, there's an ad that will be in the paper. We have to put it in the paper. Um, so that will be coming out next, the end of next week. Um, that just letting the community know that they're going to be here. So those are all, um, expectations held through DESE. So I just wanted to update you on that. Any questions about that?
I actually have a question.
Sure.
People from DESE are coming into the building. They're actually going to meet with our students?
No.
They're going to be with our students?
No, they, no.
Okay, can we deal with that?
No, they don't meet with the students. They don't interview the students. They interview the staff as well as families.
Okay. Then we can deal with it.
Okay.
Because we don't know these people from anywhere.
Correct, correct.
And to your parents, do, what, what do they, upstairs, what do they ask?
They ask parents about some, some procedures, um, with regards to special education, the way that the, the education is going, um, the way that the IEP process is going, as well as English language learners, the information that they're getting. It's just to check, to make sure that we're doing everything the right way. Exactly. Um, so we submit a lot of information to them. Um, special education, all the, the required information was presented last year. Um, the ELL information was presented, um, was put into the Dropbox on December first, yay? And civil rights was also presented. Title One, all the information was, was presented. Um, they had to submit all the information on CD-ROMs and ship that off. So we had, we had requirements of what we needed to present. And basically it's to show, it's to show them evidence that we're doing what they're asking, what, what we're supposed to be doing um, according to the state regulations.
They do it just every six years?
They do it every six years?
Eighteen, huh?
Correct. Uh, it's our turn. And they also do a mid-year review, um, a mid-cycle review, shall I say, at the third year, um, where they just have a check-in. So.
In every district, yes?
Every district. Every district in the Commonwealth. Yes. Okay. Um, if you have any questions regarding that, please feel free, um, to give me a call or email me. Um, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Um, just so that you know, our sleep study, we have a subgroup. Um, we have some interested parents that, um, are asking us to look at whether to change the sleep, just change the sleep, listen, I, to change the start times of the, of the middle school and high school. Um, ultimately it will affect the elementary schools as well. So we have a subcommittee where we're meeting. Um, once, we're trying to meet once a month, but it's looking more like once every month and a half. Um, we had two meetings already. The second meeting we just had, we had two guest speakers. Um, the Duxbury Athletic Director, Tom Holdgate, and the NOSAT Assistant Superintendent, who's a resident of Plimpton, Keith Galley. Um, they shared with the, the sleep study committee, um, some pros and cons for, for pushing time back, um, start times back. The research, we can't argue with the research. The research that is out there is saying that, um, our older students need more time. They need more sleep. They need to start later in the day. It is what's best for kids. However, when we look at the logistics and we are really trying to examine everything that comes into play, we have to really analyze what is best for, for us. So our next meeting is, um, January seventh. I will double check that date. It's in here. Um, and it's welcome, it's open to the public. So if anybody's interested in attending, feel free. And we are next, what we're going to be doing is we're planning educational forums throughout the towns to kind of educate people on some of the issues that we're looking at and then ultimately having a survey to see if there's interest in this. Because if there is no interest, we, why continue planning? Because obviously ultimately it will affect, um, you know, lots of things for families. So the, it is December, January seventh at four o'clock at the Silver Lake Middle School Library.
So the speakers you had, has Duxbury and NOSAT changed their start time? Is that why?
Yes, they both changed their start time. Um, the Duxbury, um, Athletic Director talked about it from the high school athletics perspective, about changing schedules. Um, some of the, the, he, he shared with us that there's, the, the students are rushed from one thing to the next. There isn't so much of a break time in between. The, um, the NOSAT Assistant Superintendent actually shared with us that fifty percent of their students have, um, their, their fifty percent of the students receiving Gs and Fs has increased, right?
Decreased.
Correct. They've decreased.
Less students.
Yes, less, less students with Ds and Fs. Yes, yes. Thank you, Casey.
That's, that's a big school.
Right, right, right.
And they're a regional school.
But, but, yes. And I also have spoken with the, um, the principal at Sharon High School, um, where they also have very publicly pushed back the start time and their academics hadn't changed as much. So there's lots of, lots of things to take into account. It was very good to hear from other people, from other districts that have implemented, to hear the pros and the cons.
First hand.
For the committee. Exactly, exactly. So it was, it was good.
Did they mention how it affected the elementary school kids?
So there's, there's many, um, possibilities out there of, of, there's different variations that you can go with. You can either swap times. You can push all of them back. So the sleep study needs committee is looking at, at all of those options.
Okay.
To kind of present to the communities. So we'll let you know when those, when those, um, meetings are planned. We're hoping to have one in each town.
You know, as you said, the Ds and Fs, they got better. That was middle high school?
Yes.
Did the same towns, were there, um, did they switch places or did it affect the elementary school at all?
Not achievement wise, that he noted. They, they could have, it wasn't asked.
They can get it early.
Yeah.
One of the things, we, we did a sleep mean study, you know, quite a few years ago in the district. And one of the things that came out of it was there was an interest on the elementary level because parents concerned about students being out at the bus stop in the dark.
Right.
We don't have a whole lot of streetlights in Halifax. We don't have many sidewalks in Halifax. So it is a concern. So since, and, and it wasn't just in Halifax at the elementary level that there was no interest. It was district wide. So it, it kind of got left there. And we had parents bring it up to, I believe, Silver Lake. And Silver Lake decided, you know, that they wanted to move forward with it. So the, the group was formed. There are parents, I think, from all three.
Yes.
Communities.
All three communities.
Um, school committee members, administration.
Teacher representation.
Teacher representation, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
It's all, and we're really taking it seriously. We really want to make sure that we give it a good shot this time. I mean, there was so much work put in it last time. And, and I think the committee might have been a little before its time at that time.
I was just going to.
With the research saying, you know, that, that, that the melatonin in our adolescence doesn't kick in until later. So they're not getting that deep REM sleep they need. It, you can't argue with the research. You really can't.
Right.
So if there's a workable solution to this, this is what we're trying to come up with.
And back when the, when the, um, original committee had been in place, um, the research wasn't as public and it wasn't as out there. Um, MAS C at the, at the conference also had, um, their delegates vote to support recommendations for, um, legislation to go forward with the pushing back start times in, in high schools. So.
Is our start time currently governed by legislation?
No.
No.
So they want to, they want to make legislation for that?
Uh, there was something in the, in one of the books, verbiage, that, that actually, um, supported a recommendation for, um, for some legislation.
Were you there on Wednesday?
No, I had to, I couldn't take the whole week off. So I missed Wednesday. I know, I knew there was a vote, but I didn't realize it involved the legislature. I think that's a little over.
Yeah, I don't know the actual wording was. Was it on that?
Usually the, um, delegate meeting
Mm-hmm.
is where school committee members, their delegates vote on different initiatives that
Mm-hmm.
we want to put forward. Doesn't mean they have to.
Right, 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 right. I just didn't, I didn't realize it, it involved, uh, the state house. I just thought it was something that.
Yeah, no, the, the, the different initiatives is what MAS C takes to.
For lobbying, yeah, right. Gotcha.
So I anticipated, um, that number two on the agenda would be a, a more lengthy discussion. So that's why I asked to go out of order. So thank you for allowing that. So on November seventeenth, the Massachusetts Board of Education voted eight to three to begin transitioning to a state assessment referred to as MCAS two point O or the next generation MCAS. Um, this change will take place in the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen school year. DESE has shared that MCAS two point O will consist of PARC and/or PARC-like questions. Also, the goal to be an online assessment by two thousand nineteen. In the meantime, since we took MCAS in the past year, we're being asked to decide on which assessment to take this year. Um, I have a document that I have, um, added to your handouts that, um, I shared with the teachers as well to inform you on the differences between the two. If PARC is chosen, we will be held harmless at our current accountability level. We will also have opportunities to work out the, to work out the kinks before MCAS two point O will be a mandate for all. However, choosing MCAS will allow us to compare our data more easily for another year and provide us with an assessment that we already know. It's an, it's important to note that DESE has also decided to eliminate the long composition on MCAS this year in grades four and seven.
But they're adding a writing piece to all the grades.
So the writing piece that they're adding is, it's not adding. They're, they're adding more questions that are, that are, um, open response.
Okay.
They're not, and they will be asked to, they're, they're including some PARC-like questions in the MCAS, um, but those will be very minimal. Um, we, they, they're not sure what percentage of the MCAS will be, um, have some PARC-like questions on it. But they did, when we asked the question to the state, they said it'll be very minimal on the MCAS this year. Um, this is not a decision, just so you know, for the high school, um, because the high school, it's still, um, tied to the graduation requirements. So it's not an option. The high school will be taking the MCAS period, end of story. Um, they are looking at revising that, um, through the two thousand nineteen cohort. So the, so they're taking MCAS through the, um, our freshman class that, um, will be graduating in two thousand nineteen. So tonight, we, you need to, um, vote on whether you would like, because on December eighteenth, we have to report to the state if we are going to go with the PARC for two thousand, for this current school year, or if we're going to stick with MCAS. Um, and before you vote, I would just like to share some, some observations that the curriculum coordinators and principals and I have spoken about. And you'll see that on this page is called MCAS or PARC. That is the question. I do know that in Halifax, and I want to be very mindful of the political, um, the political arena that has come up around, um, PARC or MCAS. Um, so I ask that you, that you look at this document and keep an open mind to try and make what, uh, the best decision for our students. Um, so if you look at the test administration format, you'll see that MCAS is paper pencil. Um, PARC is paper pencil or online. Um, PARC is paper pencil or online. So, as a district, if we went with PARC, we could choose if we wanted to, um, have a paper pencil version or if we wanted to attempt to take it online. Um, the test content, the MCAS assesses mostly recall of facts, procedures, and some conceptual understanding. Um, the ELA has basic comprehension and analysis of text, where the PARC assesses higher order reasoning and application of knowledge. In math, the standards for math practice are also assessed. So, in our current frameworks that were adopted in two thousand eleven, um, there are actual math practice standards that all teachers are implementing. Um, they're not written in the grade level frameworks, but they are written in the, it's pages twenty-one through twenty-three. If anybody wants to look up the frameworks, they can, they can find them on those pages um, to see the actual application of the, the standards. How teachers prepare students, um, they teach to the standards. Um, they can teach to the test as well, they can learn to identify key words, learn tricks to assessments. Um, they also, um, students need to have a basic understanding of the learning standards for success. Um, for the PARC, again, they teach to the standards. The, um, teachers will teach the children how to apply the standards. They're, they're, um, they're still learning the formats for testing. Um, students need a deep understanding of the learning standards so they can apply the learning to new situations in real world contexts. Um, the next category says the relation to standards. Um, on the MCAS, it provides data on content standards. For the PARC, it provides data on content and process standards, reflects academic expectations of higher education and employers. Um, the writing, um, for MCAS requires students to write open responses, which assesses comprehension and analysis of texts, but does not assess writing standards. So, the writing standards that we have are not assessed through, um, the actual writing standards aren't necessarily assessed in this way. Um, currently, we have two grades in which long comp are assessing student writing, which is grades four and seven. Um, that, but DESI, as I stated, um, these, said that these sections will be eliminated this year in favor of writing in response to texts in all grades. Um, in place of these compositions, DESI is including at least one PARC writing task for each grade. Um, and on the PARC, it requires students to write essays in response to text, litera- literary analysis, narrative, and research simulation tasks. Um, the data analysis potential is that the DESI, for MCAS, DESI has stated that minimal PARC items will be included in this year's MCAS tests for grade three through eight. Um, in the PARC, for data analysis potential, will, as stated by Commissioner Chester, best provide your stu-, and this is a quote, "Best provide your students, teachers, and parents with a year's head start on instructional and student performance expectations that will be incorporated into the Commonwealth's two thousand seventeen exam." And the accountability for MCAS will be held accountable for results with potential level change. And if we chose the PARC, we will be held harmless for this year. Which means, the only way that, i- if we actually did extremely well in the PARC, we could move up a level, if that were the case, if that's something that, that can happen. Um, we can't move down a level because of, um, test results. So, I just wanted to clarify that. And just to note on the bottom that all high schools will use MCAS this year, as stated before, as it still remains a graduation requirement, at least through the class of two thousand nineteen.
So, and correct me if I'm wrong, they voted not to go with PARC?
Correct.
Okay, so why do we want to give a PARC exam?
Yeah.
If, if what they're saying is where they're going to change the MCAS committee, they will keep the MCAS, they're just going to update it, I don't see a reason for us to give a PARC exam in two thousand and sixteen, which is a month away.
So, it's a great question, and, um, I actually, um, had a wonderful email exchange with someone from DESI and asked the same question. And if I can, um, share their response. My question was, being, besides being held harmless and having experience with online assessment, why would a district go to PARC for only a year? And her, and their response was, "Given that the Next Generation Assessment for two thousand seventeen and beyond will be built with PARC and PARC-like items, switching to PARC this year also gives students and educators a chance to see the items in an operational setting, instead of viewing them for the first time in two thousand seventeen." It essentially gives district two years, or three if they did PARC last year, in a held harmless situation to adapt to these types of items and way of assessing. And I, and she said, "I suggest looking here," which is the parkonline.org backslash assessments, backslash practice dash tests, "for some ideas of what makes PARC items different." They have a breakdown for elementary and high school that explains how PARC items are different. Um, I will tell you too that, um, I, in my previous life, I, um, did experience, I, we were a PARC district. Um, in fourth grade, the, the level of rigor completely changes, the fourth grade assessment. There are multiple, multiple answers for, for a common, um, for a question, potentially. They'll say, "Choose the best three that fit this," or, um, um, you know, there, there's different scenarios like that. And it is a new way of assessing students. And while the MCAS, you know, had its place and did a nice, a nice job and provided us with a lot of data, there is a need for an updated version as, as the, um, to assess what, what, the changing environment in education and how we're preparing our students for the workplace. Um, and, and I, I, I like to change, to, to, instead of saying career and college readiness, which is a, a terminology that's used all the time, I like to say that we're preparing our children for life. Um, and, so, with that, I mean, I, I'd love to take any questions, I've been doing a lot of research. I have my little MCAS versus PARC folder here, um, and, but ultimately, it is up to you. Um, I do have a survey out to teachers as well, um, to see just what they, they would recommend.
May I ask what the three of you would recommend in this situation?
Absolutely.
It doesn't matter what.
Um, I would, for the mere sake of having the experience with a new way of assessing children, I would, um, recommend PARC.
I would agree with that, um, just because we haven't had any exposure to it. I think just giving them the opportunity to, to witness that and experience it would be great. Just, um, because there are some other districts that have already gone through it. This, like they said, it could be their third year involved with it. So, I think it, it would be the, my thought is to move towards PARC.
My only question is the accountability, um, performance level. Are they there when comparing your MCAS results to a PARC test? Or will we lost for a year, that's my only question. And my other question is, if they're going to make the MCAS test PARC-like, what's going to be the difference? That's what we still have to know, what's going to be the difference? Is it going to be a different test than PARC, or is it going to be an MCAS-PARC test?
Right, and, and the, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, although they, um, the board took the vote of eight to three in favor of MCAS two point oh and MCAS Next Generation, interchangeably the same name, um, they are still remaining a part of the PARC consortium, um, which is part of the states that are involved with the PARC. Um, and they will still have access to the questions, the PARC questions. Um, so.
And destroy, you get some of your previous.
So, the other, the other thing is, um, they are able to, they've come up with mathematical formulas to compare MCAS versus PARC, those are public documents, um, where you can see, they have, I'm actually visualizing it, I'm a visual learner, um, how they, they, they note the growth. Um, it will be interesting because the PARC parent reports have not come out yet. Um, I live, my, my children, my son took the PARC last year, um, online in fourth grade, so I'll be interested to see what the report looks like when it comes home. Um, but, one thing that I will say too is that, you know, having experience with it, you know, even in my previous district, this year, they have to stay with PARC, if they're a PARC district, last year they have to stay. They already have a year under their belt. And so, that's, that's just one thing that I, um, if, if this Next Generation Assessment, and, and I also will share with you that many of the, the, um, the assessments that are out there, that P, that districts are purchasing to progress monitor throughout the year, are all, look, they're all online, um, they're, they're providing information where the kids are having to scroll back and look at from one, one text, comparing text to the other. Um, and for, for me, to be able to be held harmless while our children actually are in the environment where they're, they're taking the test, it just, to me, seems like a good opportunity. However, whatever decision you make, I would completely support and understand. Um, but is, my own professional, um, recommendation would be to, um, to try the PARC.
I think another thing we have to anticipate is technology.
That was my next question.
It's completely a hundred percent online, and are we going to, do we have the technology?
But we could also, but we could also do paper pencil versus technology. So, that's an, that's something that we can decide if we don't feel that we have the capability, technology wise. Um, it also, you know, the MCAS, the, the test sometimes can last the whole day, it's an untimed test. The PARC is, is timed, it's shorter, um, so it's easier to schedule. Um, if you had, for example, a computer lab, you could cycle classes through, and through the testing window. It's a larger testing window than the paper pencil testing window, um, for that purpose. Um, also, you know, you, you're guaranteed to have some kinks the first time you do it. I mean, that would be my educational guess. Um, and so, I feel that, what a great time to work those kinks out with an online assessment. Um, or, if not, if we chose to do, if you chose to, um, do the paper pencil, the benefit would be for the children to have access to the content, um, like they, they haven't had in the past.
Um, and just to weigh in a little bit, when we, um, when this initially came out, I want to, you know, Chrissy's doing the presentation because that is a key part of the job, and if we had been reversed, that would have been me, um, doing that. And I'm doing a pretty good job of keeping my mouth shut because it's not easy. We're jumping here. But, you know, Chrissy, Chrissy's done a very nice job of putting this together, but I want to let you know a little bit of the history of how some of the process here. So, when this initially came out, one of the things that we did was the state held a webinar, which presented additional information on the difference between MCAS and PARC. Um, at the webinar, we, uh, Chrissy and myself and all the curriculum coordinators listened in on the webinar. We developed the questions, which Chrissy sent in, representing all of our questions and concerns. Um, at our last administrative meeting, we polled all the administrators on how they felt. And we also, um, asked, I asked Chrissy to put together a survey to our staff. Um, just so you know, this isn't something that we're doing lightly, it is your decision, but I, I know if I were sitting in your chair and I always try to look at things that way, I'd run all the information before me to help me make my decision, because it's an important decision. Um, when we first started this, I mean, you know, and, and I don't have a problem saying this at all, I, I'm not married to either, either decision, I really believe there is value in both. Um, my initial response was sticking with MCAS. Um, my question was very much like Linda, um, uh, because I said, "Well, if we're not going to do PARC, why would we try it for a year?" Oh, Chrissy, Casey's question, excuse me, I'm sorry, um, Casey's question, it was that side of the room. And, you know, I, I really have been thinking about this very thoughtfully. And again, I think there is definitely value in both. Um, I'm going to tell you a little bit about what I personally think, because I'm, I believe that's what you're asking, it's my opinion. Um, in terms of MCAS, um, it is a program that our teachers are familiar with. They understand the test, our students understand the test. Getting rid of the long composition, you can just hear the sighs going throughout the building, throughout the teachers. It is painful, it is truly a painful thing to watch our children do, it is awful, it really is, it's, it's a terrible event. I, I don't know what else to tell you, it's very long and it's hurt, it's painful to watch them. Um, MCAS is familiar to us, we know how to take it, we know what's expected, we know what we're teaching for the children to be able to take. All those are benefits. Um, if our scores increase enough, depending on what the level is, it could have a positive or a negative impact on MCAS, because again, there's an accountability piece. All of those things, I think, are positive. In terms of PARC, I have to say, um, online is something that is such a different experience for our children. Um, I spoke with all the surrounding superintendents at the last meeting, and it's really a very different experience for our children to take an online test. Kids seem to prefer the online test, I can tell you, they seem to like that much better. Um, our students are much more comfortable with, um, computer than we are as adults. Um, they seem to adjust much more quickly than we do, or I should speak for myself, than I do, um, on some of those things in terms of the processes. Um, I politely disagree with Kane, I do believe we have the capacity, if we chose to do it online, it would be a stretch, I'm not sure it would go by without some issues. Um, but I do believe we probably have enough Chromebooks to go through. Um, they, you do it by grade, they're timed, Chromebook is the way to take it, and I believe we have.
Two.
Two carts, I thought we had three.
Two.
We have two carts and we have two.
Two labs.
Two labs, so we do have adequate, which is a grade level, which is all we need. So, we have adequate testing.
Do you have the VMS?
Um, I would have to work with Steve, but I think we, I think we do, I believe we do, but I'll, I'll confirm that.
We did the pilot in third grade two years ago, and it worked, we did it with Chromebooks, and we did it in the computer lab, so it, it's definitely doable.
Yeah. I, I believe we do, um, it's something we've been working on when we've had this technology, you know, the, the Warren articles, that's one of the things we've been working on, is increasing our capacity. I think that is actually one of the strongest reasons to try it, is to give children that opportunity to do online. I'm not saying it's right or wrong, but again, just giving you my, my personal thoughts. Um, I do believe that the style of questions will be very different. Um, I don't know what PARC-like means, none of us do. I mean, we really don't, you know, we have a pretty good idea, um, but they're not giving us, this is what a PARC-like question looks like, you know what I mean?
Right.
They're not giving you like, we don't have the sample that we can say. And, and I'm, I don't want to have our children try something and then, when it really comes out, when it's the MCAS two point oh, the following year, it looks different than what they've done, you know what I mean? It's, it's such a switch. Um, I do worry about that. Um, I think that there are positives to both. Um, I, I don't necessarily envy you, because I know that, that it's a difficult decision. Um, this is something that we're supposed to weigh in by December eighteenth. I can ask for an extension on making the decision, um, but, again, I'm not sure the information will be that different if we wait a month. Um, and it would probably, um, ease the teachers to know what our decision is. Um, and this is really happening in real time, in terms of when this came out, this wasn't a delay on our part. This is, you know, if you've been following the news, which I'm sure you are, um, this is, this is really what's happening. So, um, the being held harmless, sure.
As a, as a matter of respect, can we turn off our electronic devices during your, um, your presentation? Thank you.
Um, so, being held harmless, just in case you don't know what that means, it means basically, or whatever accountability data is released on Wednesday, that will be what it will be next year. So, if we do horrible in PARC because it's our first time and our students don't understand it, it won't change our accountability level.
Right.
Okay, so that's what the held harmless piece means. So, again, um, the, the way this information is presented is absolutely accurate on a personal level. I see the benefits of those, I'm not married to either. Um, I can tell you on an administrative level, there seems to be more of a move towards PARC as a choice. Um, and I, I don't disagree with it, but I also understand MCAS as a very viable option, and it is what the teachers have been used to, it's what they're most comfortable, especially on the elementary level.
Chrissy, can you just get into like the specific schedule of the PARC test?
So, they haven't come out with it, no, it's, it's not anymore. They're, they're still, they're still, um, so last year, there were two tests. There was the performance-based assessment, which was in, I think, around April, and then, or March. And then there was the end-of-year assessment, which was in May. Um, yeah, it was March, Mar- around March and May, if I'm recalling accurately. So, it was two times that they were assessed, which is also similar to MCAS. But, but it was, the MCAS has the ELA at one time of the year and math at the other time of the year. What, um, what PARC did was, they did, um, math and ELA at one point, and math and ELA at the, at another point. Um, but it was performance-based versus end-of-year. This year, it's going to be one time, it's going to be one test, they're not going to have two.
They're not going to have two. So that's, that's a, that's an added, that's something that has changed from last year as well. So the change for MCAS is no long comp. The change for PARK is only one assessment rather than two.
Do we know when that one test will be?
They have given us, it's on the website, a timeframe. And it's in, it's around April. Like, if you're, if you choose the computer-based, you have a longer time span to take it. If you choose paper pencil, it's, so I think the computer-based, if I'm remembering accurately, and I should have printed that document out, I apologize, it's a three-week window and the paper pencil is a two-week window.
Computer-based is longer because you have more grades potentially, it may take longer to get them through.
Right, to cycle far. MCAS is on time.
So do you have math and ELA on the same day?
No, 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 no. Not on the same day. It was the ti- it was the span. So for MCAS, it's ELA in April. Was it April? Yes, March, March, April? What, yes. Where they, the students will all sit down and take ELA. And then once ELA is over, then they focus on math. And math gets assessed in May. And so it's only ELA at one time of the year, only math at the next time of the year. For PARK, they, they would do math and ELA. So one day they would take it. So for MCAS, one day you would take session one, the next day you would take session two, or a couple of days later, take session two. All in the same content. For PARK, you would take ELA on one day, math on the next day. You, you, they do not recommend taking two tests on the same day.
Is it the same amount of sessions, do we know? Like, MCAS was two ELA sessions, two math sessions, as PARK set up the same way?
It's similar, but it's time, there's, there's not as many questions and it's a shorter timeframe.
Probably between 60 and 70 minutes.
Right, right. It depends. Either, some, some are 45 minutes, some are, depending on the grade level, it depends on the time that the, the assessment is. Right. Brian also has experience with PARK, as the district he's coming from was also a PARK district. I will tell you too, one of the questions that I asked the state is, will MCAS 2.0 Next Generation have actual PARK questions? Or will they be based off of PARK questions? And the response was, the plan, as stated by the commissioner, is to have existing PARK items, existing MCAS items, as well as new items written specifically for the 2017 test. It's presumed that these items, as well as the MCAS items, will be PARK-like in the way that they assess student thinking. So that's how they're differentiating the terminology for stu- for PARK-like versus MCAS questions. The PARK-like questions are, are asking the children to apply their learning. So read this, now respond to. Read this and read this. Compare the two and respond, you know, in, in a particular way. And the math, you really need to, it's, in the open response ones, where there's part A, part B, you really need to go back and look at part A, you know, okay, so this was the scenario, you had to figure this out. Now you have to figure this out based off of, of the first part of the question. MCAS definitely had aspects of this, but PARK assesses it a little bit deeper. And will provide the information for teachers about how to, the types of, the, the types of ways that they're asking students to learn. So right now, we were sort of, for the past 10 years, been in the shift of teacher-driven instruction versus student learning. So, so student-based learning versus teacher-driven instruction. And that's where the shift has been as well.
Nice. Brian, what do you thought, and what do you teach us when they made this apart?
How about the students? The students thought the test was very hard, but they really liked the aspect of taking a test online. Administrators, easy if you have the technology and if you're taking it online. Or MCAS, you were doing a lot of sped bubbling, stickers, making sure classrooms were set up, booklets, so time-consuming, much easier to take than PARK. But it was challenging. They had to write a little, they had, I mean, little third and fourth graders were analyzing literature and comparing texts and, you know, very much higher level thinking.
So you did it online, and you didn't have any technical glitches?
We had a few. We didn't, we don't have the technology that we have here. So even though we might think we might have limited technology, we had less at my school. As I were saying.
Okay.
So I think we could do it. But it's a challenging test. But the kids really liked the aspect of taking an online test. And once you press send, it gets sent off, so.
I talked to a teacher in Weymouth, and they had a lot of technical difficulties and not good tech support. And she explained A to B and one thing that they must look into, whatever, some sort of glitch, and they weren't getting help. And the other teachers weren't too happy about being compared to, you know, the apples and oranges and.
There were glitches. Students would get logged off, you'd have to log them back on. They would get frustrated.
The teachers were quiet, and superintendent Kane and Patricia, so I just wanted to talk to the teachers and.
Well, and our, our teachers here in Halifax, we are, they're, they're participating in an anonymous survey. I can tell you that as of now, it's pretty split between which assessment they would rather take, which is really interesting. I've been really enjoying watching the feedback coming back in, because.
I'm still hearing what they hear, because none of them have.
Correct.
Places yet.
Correct. I've given, I've given them the information that I've given you. And they're at the, so yes, that's, that's correct. And it's a lot of the media, that, the media things that they've been hearing. I, I will tell you, in the district that I was in, in my school, we were paper pencil. We weren't online. And the, the students, they, they thought it was difficult, but were so happy because the time, it was just, okay, it's over, we're done. And, and they're like, oh, thank goodness. You know, my son took it online, and my son actually didn't think it was difficult. Let's wait to see what his scores are. But, you know, and, and there are definite aspects to that too, and the glitches, you know, working those out, our, our elementary schools took it paper pencil, but the middle school took it online. And, you know, all the tech people were there, ready for it, you know? So any glitch that happened, they were all there while it was going on. I mean, it was all hands on deck.
It wasn't the IT there.
Correct.
Yeah, it was park glitches.
Yeah, park glitches. And I also said to Joy that I'd be interested in hearing, because the PARK districts have no choice, they have to take PARK again. I'll be interested in hearing if they did computer-based and did it again, or paper-based, whatever, after the second year of taking it, what their feedback is. You know, because I think the first time with anything, there's, there's challenges. Change is difficult for anything. So it will be interesting to hear the feedback after they've experienced the assessment once, and the way that it's assessed, and all at once, you know, everyone taking it at once, what the feedback would be.
I'm sorry. I just want to make sure I was completely clear. The four ministers at this table, all favor PARK, is that correct?
I don't. I'm, I'm, I'm not 100% PARK. I'm, I am not. I, I would be comfortable with either decision. I think there are benefits to both. I, I'm concerned about the investment of time if the new MCAS 2.0, I just don't know what it's going to look like. And I don't want to have our children take a test and then take another test, which really is formatted differently. I wish I knew more what they really meant by PARK-like. I do feel, I wish MCAS had an opportunity to be an online MCAS, because I see that as really one of the greatest benefits, is for our children to have an opportunity to take a timed, because MCAS being untimed and then taking a timed test is going to be huge. You know, again, we always teach our children in class, do the best you can, take the time you need, right? I mean, that's what we want. We want our children to be successful, we want to teach them to. The new test looks like it's going to be timed. That is a whole new teaching strategy for our children. I mean, think about it. You know, you're going to have a third grader who, you know, maybe, you know, just be learning some skills. And, you know, we really like to give them the time they need so they feel confident, so they feel they can be successful. Whereas with a timed test, it's over. You know, you finished, you finished, you didn't, you didn't. I mean, there is a period of time. It is really a whole different teaching strategy. So a timed online test, and by 2019, MCAS will be that test. That's when it will definitely be online, according to what we're reading at this time. Not saying the state won't change their mind, because they do it on quite a regular basis. But at this point in time, in 2019, it will be an online test, and I believe it will be timed from everything, unless I misread something, and I don't believe I have. So I, I can, that to me is one of the biggest benefits, I have to be honest with you, because I just think the experience of that in and of itself, a timed online test, is radically different. That's probably one of the greatest benefits. And PARK really is such a different philosophy, you know, in terms of, as, as Chrissy said very nicely, it's a different way of thinking. It is very much a different way of thinking. It's much more higher order thinking. But again, where it lies at this point, you know, we're, we're sort of in a no-man's land. So both sides, I, I, again, I, I see the benefits of both. I am not heavily, heavily one way or the other. I, I guess I'm, it's hard to make that change. But I, I don't disagree with anything they've said. But again, we'll make, we'll make whatever you offer, whatever you vote is obviously what will happen. And again, I don't think we're going to have any additional information between now and the next month. But, you know, and again, I apologize if you don't feel prepared to take a vote, but my guess is it's.
The reason I'm curious whatever the individual opinion is, is because you obviously have far greater experience than any other member on this board in terms of making these type of decisions. I realize ultimately it's our responsibility, but my vote will be informed by what your viewpoints are.
Yeah.
I think the description of MCAS PARK-like maybe needs more answers on our park, because I think we're still in the unknown. And I think they're trying to fix the glitch. There was a lot of testing last year. So I think, based on that, they are cutting the test down. It still was a lot of testing.
Right.
And timed for regular students, untimed for sped students.
Right.
And students receiving accommodations, so.
There are also more accommodations that children get, that regular students that don't need any other assistance get with the PARK. The, the, you have a highlighter where the children can highlight, where in the, on the MCAS, there has to be an accommodation. You, the principal has the right to identify students that might need read-alouds, where it has to be an, an actual accommodation on a 504 or IEP. You can also, the math, if there's headsets, can be read through the, so you're not assessing reading in math, you're assessing how the children understand the math concept, applying them, instead of actually reading, they're assessing them on reading the word problems. So those are all, there's a, there's a list of accommodations that all children get that on the MCAS, some children get, and that's mandated by their 504s or IEPs. But there are ones that are specific to, you know, 504s and IEPs. One of the other added things is that if a child comes in with a broken arm, the day, the, the arm that they write with on the day of the assessment, you have to immediately, if you're an MCAS, bring the parent in and have a 504 meeting and put them on a 504 in order to have a scribe. And in the PARK, it's just something that you note. It's not, exactly. It's not a legal document that, that MCAS, MCAS makes you do. So there's, there's, as an administrator, it was much, I didn't feel as, as pressured by the test like I did with MCAS. I mean, MCAS, it's like you keep it in a locked room, you, nobody's allowed in there, you have to sign the tests in and out, and everybody, I mean, I, it was, it was my, my office, I had a special lock made for my closet because MCAS had to be stored in there. For the PARK, the, the paper and pencil, it was, it was still that way. But for my colleague at the middle school who did it online, there was no stress around that type of security. So there's, as an administrator, while you're, it is scary, you're waiting for the results. As far as the actual taking of the test, it wasn't as stressful, so.
Did any of you attend the public hearings?
Yes.
You did. And you, you noticed the sentiment there?
Yes.
Okay. Did you go to the one in Bridgewater?
No, I didn't. I, I was unable to make that one. But I heard, I was at the same MASC one that you were at, and I also attended.
Public hearings.
I, I came to the one here when I was, I wasn't appointed.
No, not, not the forums, the, the public hearings that Charlie Baker instructed the Department of Education to go out and get response.
Oh, I did not attend the Bridgewater one.
And administrators and parents that have.
Right.
Their opinion on, on PARK.
Right.
And it was, it was pretty heavy.
Yeah.
Not in favor of PARK, actually.
Right.
Yeah, there were a few superintendents that got up and spoke in favor of it, but overwhelmingly, teachers were pretty upset with what was, with what happened last year, in terms of the PARK exam. But I did want to make note of a couple of things, that the PARK consortium began with 26 states and Washington DC. It is now down to seven in Washington DC. So ultimately, it has not been trending well, it's becoming a failure. The sheer fact that Massachusetts is still involved in the PARK consortium, I find a bit concerning for several reasons. Not the obvious being that Mitchell Chester, our Commissioner of the Department of Education, is the Chairman of the Governing Board of the PARK Consortium, which is an issue, in my opinion. And I also wonder the fate of PARK, with it being a Common Core-aligned test, seeing as there's a very good potential there will be a ballot question next year, instructing the legislature to remove Common Core from our state. So I'm wondering what's going to happen if that passes. It's just something I think about.
I'm not sure we can base decisions on the potential of future votes, though.
Yeah, but it's, it's really happening, though, so.
No, I understand it's a ballot question. But I don't think that we can make immediate decisions.
You can do whatever you like, I'm just stating the fact that.
No, I'm, 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 I'm sorry. I wasn't trying to interrupt you. When this ballot question takes place, our decision is going to occur earlier than that.
Right, so I'm, that's not my question. My question is, what will the fate of PARK be if that passes? If Common Core is removed from our state, what will be the fate of PARK, seeing as it is a Common Core line is in?
But that question is not relevant to the vote tonight, because this will be in place before that vote even takes.
Sure, if you don't want to, if you don't want to look.
No, may I just make my statement, please? When that vote takes place, it's still going to take time from that point to implement any changes in the curriculum.
Oh, absolutely.
So I just don't feel that that particular ballot question is relevant to the decision we have to make tonight, because this is, we're only voting for what occurs over the next year.
It will be what, it will be what, it will be what test we take this upcoming spring.
Correct.
The following year, there will be no voting. It will be what the state tells us we're doing.
Yes, so it doesn't have any.
Right. This, this year is our only year to take a vote. To take a vote.
Right.
This is our only year to take a vote. And what we've been directed, and again, it was a very short timeframe, and I apologize for that, but it, we're doing what we're being directed to do at this point, is, you know, we're being directed as a school system to let them know by December 18th what we're voting. And I'm going to ask for an extension, because Clinton doesn't even meet until the 21st, so I can't even get the deadline for Clinton. But again, you know, we're, we're working our way through, you know, we have done our due diligence, I believe, in terms of getting the information, doing the research, you know, trying to talk to our stakeholders, i.e. the administrators, the teachers. We, we're not asking the students, we're, you know, in with them. But again, I, you know, I think at this point in time, I, I don't know if you feel ready to take a vote, or if you want to think about it a little bit, and we could move forward, and I could do my presentation, we could come back to it. I just, you know, again, I think the information is unfortunately as clear as we can make it. I don't know what else we can do. Everything, everyone has said is absolutely valid. I, I just want to let you know that. I mean, there's, there's positives and negatives, like most things in life, to both decisions, to both sides. You know, again, this is just a one-year vote. Next year, it will be MCAS 2.0, next school year. Okay, but this, this spring, we do have an opportunity. I can't guarantee the technology will work. I know many school systems had it work without glitches. I know many school systems had horrific times with it. I mean, it really depends a little bit on your infrastructure. I believe we have the capacity to do it. I am concerned about our technology help. We are not heavy in terms of our supports. We don't have any. Hi, Steve. That's our help over there. So I am concerned about that. I believe we have, if we were to choose to do it, I believe we could do it online.
Online, we have, the infrastructure is solved, it's solved. We've been working the past few years and the infrastructure is solved. Device count may be your limiting factor here. We have two packs of Chromebooks in one lab that have, barring any technology issues on there, will perform fairly well. But depending on how many sessions and how many classes have to go through those sessions, you might be affected by that.
Okay, so it looks like it could work? How is that for a really firm decision?
You can't anticipate all the...
We absolutely cannot. But again, you know, that is, if we were to vote to do Park, to me, one of the greatest benefits, if, if you were to vote it, I believe would be the online piece. Because I just think it's such a different type of test for the children. If we weren't to do the online piece, I, I feel like you might as well stay with the, with the MCAS. Because to me, the, one of the greater benefits is the online component for students.
And I just, I want to just add one thing, that if the vote does come through, that, that the Common Core, you know, that, that ballot initiative does pass, I still believe that the way of assessing will remain similar. Not the content of the, not, not the content, the, the actual frameworks, but the, the way of assessing, like Joy had said, the online comparing to, to texts, you know, or something like that. It's, it's having multiple answers within a given answer. That's, that's my, that's, because I, I've been listening and I, I've been reading and I, I hear the, the, it's, it pains me to say, you know, that I, that we have to make this decision. But for me, it's based on what, the way of assessing a child versus, and we don't have anything currently in the district to assess children in this capacity unless teachers make it up themselves. And that's, that's, I just wanted to clarify that, because I know that this has been a very hot topic around the Commonwealth, not just here in Halifax, but everywhere. And that's really what, what I'm basing my decision, what my recommendation is. However, if the, if the committee votes for MCAS, I mean, we will go forward and, and there's no turning, you know, that's, that's the decision. And that we're supporting, we as an administration support you either way. So I just wanted to name that.
I feel like there's no right answer here.
I, I don't disagree.
When we vote here, we're potentially putting our children in additional danger. And I, for one, I don't like that coming down from the state at all. I resent it. They were supposed to make a decision, and they pushed it back on us again. And I don't think that's right, especially since there is not going to be Park in the future, but online is part of the future.
Exactly.
I think a motion would be appropriate at this point.
I, I don't disagree.
I'll make the same motion I made last year, to stay with MCAS for the following year.
No, for this year.
For this year.
Okay, all those in favor of administering MCAS in the 2015-16 school year? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Same.
I abstain, because I don't feel like the state is giving us enough information to make an informed decision.
Good for you, Casey. I like that, yeah. Did Linda vote? I'm sorry.
Yes, she did.
She said aye.
Aye.
Yeah, okay, I just had to make sure I had it correct. Okay, so we're sticking with MCAS? That's what the board wants? Okay, perfect. Okay.
That's what the majority wants, not what the board wants.
Three.
But who board must support the vote of the majority?
I'm not, I think not.
Yep, 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 no, I agree. So MCAS it is, just so you know, you know, the teachers will feel, feel more comfortable having a decision made. So thank you for doing that tonight. And I apologize for putting you on the spot. To be honest with you, this was something that, when we had to do this last year, you know, it was difficult. We'll be making the rounds, doing this at all the school committees. But it, you know, it is, to all of your points, it's a difficult decision. And I think that, you know, again, to me, one of the, the parts that I think is, is going to be the most interesting is that online and that timed. Because timed tests are really a whole different animal. They really are. I mean, you know, if you really just sort of stop and think about, you know, your, your time in school and, you know, always having that support of, you know, if you need more time, you know, because we really want our children to do their best. So it's, it's a really different strategy we're going to have to begin to switch to.
Would you inform us when the other towns in our district have made a decision? If they do?
Sure. If we had all the school committees, and I'll try to remember to drop you a note.
If not, I'll, I'll send you off. Thank you. Do you want to jump into your financial report?
I would be, I would be happy to, thank you. So let me find my glasses, so I can see. You have before you your financial report. Christine has been extremely busy doing all the end of the year reports, which is a requirement that we have to do each year for the state and beginning to build the budget. So I gave her December off as her last month off, because she's going to be nonstop until then. So I'm attempting to be as kind as possible to my...
Budget guy?
Everybody. I'm trying to be nice, I really am. I'm really working at being nice and trying to give people off as much time as possible, because we're putting in a huge number of hours. So in our, in our financial report this month, the good news is, there's not been anything really unexpected in terms of impacting the budget. There's only a few items, and they're pretty much the same that were there last month on page four of the detail. About three quarters of the way down the page, there's a deficit of $17.78, and that is in supplies and maintenance. I think we mentioned that last month. And then on the bottom of page five, there's a deficit under special education supplies of $680.08, and that's just for some materials that were needed for some of our special education students. Sometimes IEPs change, and there are requirements, and we don't always have enough money budgeted. And then the next area is a deficit of, on the top of the next page, $277.80, and that's under supplies for testing materials, again, that are needed for some of the tests that we have to do for our students. The next item of a concern, and this is a very large number, and again, it's about what it was last month, and that is for our out-of-district students under special education, and it's a deficit of $497,186.50, and it's for special education tuition. We have not, at this point, credited circuit breaker, and we will also be applying for extraordinary relief, because sometimes a student may move into the district that has a very expensive placement that was not budgeted for. So there's something called extraordinary relief, which comes up in January, and we'll be applying for that. So we are hopeful that we'll be able to make all those numbers work, okay? The good news is that we're expecting to be able to return approximately $60,000 to the town. We had five students apply for out-of-district vocational. Only four students ended up going, and the transportation costs ended up running a lot less, because between all of our districts, and we also share buses with Marshfield and Duxbury, the transportation costs were lowered. And it resulted in a savings of about $60,000, which if no one moves into Halifax, will be returning to the town. And that's available to them. So at this point in time, that's currently the financial. Does anybody have any questions or concerns about that? And you'll be seeing Christine next month and for the rest of the spring. She's going to be very busy. We'll get to see her a lot of times. I did just want to take a moment and ask you, if you remember last month, I began a, a budget discussion about any priorities that you would like us to look for as a district as we're building our budget. You know, we have had a meeting. What I've done is Kane has submitted his first draft budget. He worked with that with Brian. They did a very nice job for his first round. I was really, did a great job. He was very thoughtful, put a lot of effort in. I was very proud of him. We've had our first round budget meetings. What I'm doing is I'm sort of adding a layer. So I'm meeting individually with each of our administrators. I've already met with Kane, and I'm meeting with them with Chrissy and Murray, if, if all three of us can be made at the same time, which is no easy task. And we're meeting with each of the principals individually to just get their first draft of what they're submitting as a budget. Let me understand what you're thinking. Why are you asking for this? Why are you not asking for that? Does it make sense numerically with what was asked for last year? Or is this a number that makes no sense? Is there some mistake? After that meeting, their budgets are being corrected, and then that's submitted to Christine, who feeds it into the actual budget, okay? After that, we'll have the real round of going through the budget, more like with a fine-toothed comb. What they submit to us is just an overview of what they're looking for in different areas. Like, do they need additional teaching supplies? Do we need some additional special education supplies? Because clearly, we don't have enough money budgeted. You know, we're running in the deficit here. You know, those kinds of things. So that's working very well at this point in time. So we've already had, Kane and Brian have submitted their budget. We've already had our first round budget meeting. And then Christine's working on feeding that all into the real budget program, and we'll have a second round budget. My hope, and I shouldn't say this out loud, but I'm going to be optimistic, is that we'll have these done before Christmas vacation, and we get this budget to you. That's what we're working towards. It is a very, very, did I say very? Very busy time at our office in terms of money. Again, we're working on basically five budgets simultaneously. So Christine is really out straight right now. It is a very complicated process. There's so many moving parts. We're a very large, very unwieldy district. Luckily, we have great people, so we're working very hard to make this work. But building a budget, we still have to like maintain this year's budget, the financial, pay the bills, all those things. So I think we're going to be able to pull that off, but my goal is, if at all possible, to have that information so we can get it out to you prior to the Christmas break, so that when I show up in January, because it's right when we get back, if I remember right, you'll have had some time to review that budget. So you won't see it that night. That was one of the things I know that people have expressed concern since I've been here, my 10th year, that they didn't like getting the budget the night of the meeting. So I can't make a promise, but that is our goal. I hear you loud and clear. We're trying very hard, and hopefully, we can make it. Okay, so that's what we're doing. But do you have suggestions for me as we're working our way through this?
I'd like to see the students get the same level of services next year that they have this year. I don't know that...
I agree.
It's going to be, well, be enough, but I think that's where we start.
Okay. May I, and I didn't mean to interrupt. I just got a note today from Charlie.
Do you have some information?
It's the first time I've seen it. And I don't, did you get this?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay. Charlie sent this out today, and it basically says that, given this, the Board of Selectmen have asked that departments submit budgets that will retain the same level of services in fiscal year 2017 as in fiscal year 2016. These should be as close to the same amounts as appropriated in fiscal year 16, but with the understanding that the following will require additional funding. Mandatory wage increases, the working days, there's a slight difference, number of hours. If there's changes for specific reasons, just document why we're asking for increases. Retirements are listed, but again, it is asking for not level funding, level service, which is what you just said.
Okay, because that's totally different from what I understood from the town that from the Selectmen's meeting.
It's the same level of services in fiscal year 17.
The town of Yiddish.
No, I don't think so either. It says, it says under...
The schools are treated differently.
It says, while the town's financial picture is decent, the town needs to continue to monitor large budget items, such as the retirement assessment, health insurance. But I can pass this around. I just, I literally received it today.
That's what Charlie sent out. I mean, it's not what I understood.
Can you elaborate on that?
I know, I know what you're saying, but I guess I didn't come away with the same confusion that you did. Because this is how I took it, is the schools are treated differently because part of it has to do with our contract. That's, the wage situation is different. So that's, I think, part of what they were talking about. But also, we, we, we ask, the town asks for a level service budget from every department, and the schools are treated a little bit differently because our needs are different. You know, like, we, we ultimately end up with a larger increase in our budget than other departments in the town do. And I, I took it as that's how they meant we were being treated differently, because they're a little tighter with the other departments than they are with, with us. They can tell the town, sorry, you're not getting a new plow, even though we need one. They can't tell us, you know, sorry, you're not getting a new whatever. You know, we made that decision.
Because we have line item of time.
Yes, the school committee, and I, I think that's where, you know, I'm a little concerned, because in the end, it's the school committee who gets to say how the budget is to be. Administration can make their recommendations and everything else. I'm going to borrow from Mr. Creed for a minute. The school committee doesn't want to talk. If administration wants five science teachers and we want 12 gym teachers, we're getting 12 gym teachers.
I was hired with that question.
And the gym teachers.
That was, that was my, that was my question when I was being hired, actually.
It was. So, and yes, the town, the town doesn't have that town meeting, does it? That lies with us. But that's not what I took away from the Selectmen's meeting. I think, well, where they said, you know, they're, they don't want to micromanage our budget. I believe what they said was they're going to give us a number.
Well, that was, I was just, when you were talking, I was remembering Kim and Paula, Sylvester, having that conversation where, where they were discussing whether or not do we say to the schools, more so Silver Lake, because their budget's so big, do we want level service, or do we want a two and a half percent increase from your budget, and that's it? And that's what the conversation was about.
But when they said the schools, okay, they're not just talking about Silver Lake, they're talking about...
No, right, well, they can't, they can't treat Silver Lake differently. I mean, they could, but they, I don't think that...
But, and I see, I was, when Charlie sent this out, when he sent it out, I was expecting a number. I didn't, and I could have misunderstood.
Maybe they just decided that wasn't the way to go.
I, I really don't, but that's what I was expecting.
You know they're going to give us a number anyway, regardless.
But they want one from us the first week in January.
They want one already.
Well, you know, there's only so much that's within reason, okay? And because we don't get any kind of numbers from the state as far as state or anything else until the end of January, I think, I think the beginning of January is pushing it. You know, we can come up with, have administration move up with a budget or anything else. I personally feel February would be better, but that's not what the town wants. So without any information, other than what we heard at the Selectmen's meeting, Joy is asking us, what do we think about the budget? How does, how do we want to proceed? So I'm saying that, okay, I'd like to see the, the children get the same thing they had for many, many years. We don't necessarily need the same things, okay, to provide the students with the same level of services. And I'm going to say this, you know, at one point, we have over 700 students here, okay? We don't have that level of students here, but our students are still getting that same level of services they did when we had those. So, and that's what I'm getting to, okay? We don't need the same number of staff for our 642?
Five.
Five hundred.
That we need from the, from over 700. But our students are still getting the same things. They're still getting gym, they're still getting music and art. And that's where I'm saying, you know, we need to look at it and say, okay, what do we really need to provide resources? That's all. So I'd like to see that.
Okay. Is there any other types of items that you're interested in us looking at?
Maintenance.
Maintenance?
No, the room's not going to go with the budget, because there's no way. So we can put the roof in the budget.
I know Bob, Bob's mentioned some safety, security. You know, we talked a little bit about phones in classrooms. I don't know if people are interested in us continuing to look at that as an item. One of the discussions that we had was whether or not that would be a separate article outside of our budget.
I was just going to ask that.
You know, because I think then it may not impact our budget.
It was before. I believe we got a third of it.
We got the new office phones. You actually get, you know, when you call now, it works, which is also helpful.
It's attached.
Yeah. At this point, those, the classrooms have an intercom system, but they don't have phones in their rooms. So, whether or not that's something that you'd be interested in, if we are interested in pursuing it, I think a separate warrant article where it wouldn't impact our budget. Because I'd hate to have our budget voted down because of it. That was one thing we were thinking of as a way of approaching it. Again, you don't necessarily have to answer now, but that was something that we had thought of was if it's a separate warrant article, like we have done the technology article other years.
I think they're expecting that.
And that's what I...
Okay, that's, that's great. Okay, so everybody would be comfortable with us still pursuing it that way? Great.
A question, does, do the teachers go to you and say, you know, make, make suggestions of what they want us to? Does the teachers go to you and say, and then you, and then you kind of put it all together and then you give us?
Yep. We've been, we've been asking teachers, you know, for the last couple of weeks, you know, if there's anything in particular they really would like to see, just kind of let us know. So, we're in the stages of building the budget. So, we've been doing this in preparation for the meeting with Joy and Chrissy.
Do a lot of them have you ready for it?
Everybody submits a budget of what they're looking for. You know, it may be...
Oh, each teacher does?
Each teacher does, yeah. They submit information. Each teacher does, yeah. It's, it is a very arduous process, but it's important because we need everyone to tell us what they need. We can't always give them everything they need or want. But, you know, it, it isn't that people aren't asked. Sometimes it's difficult also to know what you need. And again, you know, some of the, sometimes that happens like with special education more so than any of the other areas. Because you don't always know what students are coming or what changes might happen with them.
A lot of it's very general and routine for the classrooms. But for like the special ed teachers and for specialists, they typically would have more unique items that they would ask for. You know, I know that music, she was looking at certain instruments that she wanted to put in the budget that she hasn't been able to typically buy. The library is another area typically that we look forward to kind of boost up, you know, the books that we have here. Technology is always another piece that people are looking for. They're looking for more iPads or Chromebooks or projectors in all the classrooms. So, those are just some of the, some of the items that we hear when we're building through it, some of the curriculum. The curriculum's already set, but it's more of those other, those specialized areas.
One thing that I would like to see on the budget, not on the simple one, but a bigger breakdown, is our grant money? Like, how much money we get from grants and, and receipts from them? You know what I mean? Like, how, how we spend them, basically? Because we have our budget, but then we don't really know how much of that is being paid for by grants.
When I was Chrissy, I would do, when I sat over there, I did a presentation, April or May, and talked about the number of grants we got and how all of them are expended. And that was something that I do every year. If you go back through your April, May, the reason why we don't normally bring them up during the budget season is I think it, excuse me?
They're not in the...
They're not in the budget. It's really a standalone, separate thing, the grants. So, you have, if you were to go back through your, your information from last year, there's a, a large sheet and I go through about 10 years, Chrissy will go through about 10 years worth of the grants, how they've gone up and down, mostly down unfortunately, in terms of the amount of grants that we get and what the titles are. Like, we get a 240 grant which funds special education staff. Teacher quality funds professional development. It's strictly professional development. If you look at the line item professional development, we couldn't function as a school system if that's all we had. Title I funds our Title I tutors. There is...
I, I guess I'm wondering why that's not part of the budget.
Because it isn't, it's...
Right, I get, I get that, but I don't.
The town, yeah, no, I do. So, the town provides money, which is the budget that you have control over. The grants that we receive are either federal or state grants. You have no control over the amount of grants, money. They tell us what's available. We apply and there are some grants which are called entitlement grants that you are automatically eligible for. Title I, teacher quality, special education, they're entitlement. You always get those. You're entitled to those. Your students are entitled to those. There's competitive grants. For instance, I saw a grant for basic, I think it's, it used to be called Safe and Drug-Free Schools. And I passed it on. I can support your school. I can do that now, it's so much fun. And suggested Chrissy apply for it. We don't know if we'll get it or not, but what it would do is it would help support some of our social, social skills curriculum. That was a mouthful this time of night. Because we want to buy some new materials, sort of that social, emotional learning I've been talking about that we're trying to do. So, the grants are money that comes from the state above and beyond what's in the budget. Above and beyond what's in the budget. The budget is strictly what the town is providing. The grants, we talk about, we apply for them, we let you know how they're being used if you have some particular suggestions of some materials. But the grants are defined how you can use them. Like, they say, the federal government says, okay, teacher quality, that is for professional development. It's to pay for mentors. Like, our new teacher's going to mentor, pays for that. That's not in the budget. A lot of what used to be in the budget has been taken out of the budgets so the towns don't have to pay for it and they're funded by grants. When I started, mentors were in the budget. I took all of that out and fed it into the grants to save the town's money.
Okay.
So, that's how we use grants. We try to use them to help the town, offset what the town is paying for.
Right, right. So, do you plan on, on providing us a list of that again, or Chrissy?
Chrissy's going to do a great job with it. Wonderful. She's going to do a phenomenal job. And again, we sort of do it at the end of the budget season, but as the towns are still going, so just for them to see how it's being used. It's not that anything is hidden. It's just, it can complicate the budgets because it is not part of the budget. I don't want the, the towns or people to get confused about what a grant is versus what the budget is. They're completely different funding sources.
Okay.
Okay? But you, they always are reported on. As a matter of fact, that's something I started when I started here a long time ago was just sort of giving that history. Grants are a lot of work. I'm very happy to not be doing them.
But without the grants, we can't provide the same...
We absolutely could not. We absolutely could not.
Assessment.
Right, right. And like, the one that we turned down was quality full day kindergarten. You know, and again, I, I really felt very strongly, I thought it was absolutely the right decision. I don't believe in assessing kindergarten. I just, I, it, it's wrong on every level. So, you know, again, it has to be a lot for me to say, no, thank you. But, you know, I, I felt very strongly about that and I, I feel it was the right thing to do, so. And as you, the grants, that many of them have a lot of strings attached. And while, you know, you see, oh, here's an opportunity for a grant as a district, you know, Joy will look and say, ooh, that's not necessarily the best thing for our district, for our school community, just like that.
Is there anything else in the budget that you would like us to consider or look at?
The shared cost budget, because that impacts our regular budget. What is your timeline for that as far as, it's all moving pieces with the budget?
Really?
And the past few years, we have struggled because of contracts, issues and everything else. Is there a way, I guess, to get the shared cost piece of it in place? Because it was so late last year.
It was very late last year.
And making those adjustments and everything else. I'd like to see how the shared cost impacts Halifax before April.
Sure. I don't see that as an unreasonable request. And I will do my best to make that happen. Is there any other items that you would like us to look at?
When we present the budget in January, again, it will be a first draft, a first version for you, but it will have already gone through two iterations of changes minimally. Okay? So, it will have already gone through the first draft that we've had the one meeting for. We'll have a second meeting prior to it. Again, my goal, I can't guarantee we can do this. My goal, though, if we can, is to get it to you before the Christmas break. Okay? So, I've got everything crossed as I'm sitting up here and hopefully, we can pull that off. But that's what we're trying to do.
Okay, as you go through your iterations, okay, and there's going to be certain items that are left out of the budget. Just keep a, a list of what it is and, and, you know, share it with us. I understand we can't do it all, but I'd like to see whether or not.
Sure.
You know, and what, you know what I mean?
Yep. I'd be happy to do that. Sometimes in some of the iterations, when the initial budgets are built, there could be an error, not by anybody's intent. I keep, you know, if you've ever seen my budget books, I have every, they're substantial and I keep every piece of paper through. So, sometimes in the process of the several iterations from years past, they may be building their budget based on information, which wasn't the final information. So, you know, there could be an actual error, you know, in the process. So, sometimes those are some of the changes, are just actually like, mm, that wasn't what we started with last year. So, those kinds of things. Those ones I wouldn't necessarily be bringing forward, but what I would bring forward is if, let's say Kane decided that, which he didn't, by the way, but let's just say Kane decided he wanted to redo his office and wanted to buy all new furniture. That iteration, that iteration would not, would not be going forward because if anybody's office is getting done, I'm just saying, okay? That would not make it, that would be on the cutting room floor. My husband's a photographer. It would be gone. So, that one wouldn't make it. But, you know, and I know I mean that, say it publicly, and I'm being very facetious. Kane would never do that. I know he would never do that. So, that's not an issue. Okay? But those are the types of things. But, you know, again, I'm being very facetious with that. But if there's some things that maybe, you know, like one of the things we've talked about is could we do, redo classroom furniture? Could we do one grade level a year of updating classroom furniture? I don't know that that's going to be done in this year, especially if we're going to be asking the towns for a roof project.
Exactly.
You know what I mean? So, we're going to have to pick up, I don't want to say poison, that's not very nice, but we're going to have to pick up priorities.
Exactly.
So, you know, those are the kinds of things that we're kind of working our way through. But I'd, I'd be happy to sort of keep some of those lists, just so you understand some of what, what I'm...
So, behind, before it gets to us, do you guys go through a lot?
Yeah, because you, you would faint if you saw the...
Exactly. I understand that, but...
I like you all too much, I wouldn't want to hurt you.
But some of the things that are going to be on that list are eventually going to make it into the budget for the future.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And, and I guess that's what I'm looking for, is a way to say, okay, yeah, we were aware of it, but it wasn't a priority. But in the future, it may be, and that's what I'm kind of looking for.
Sure, okay. All right. Anybody else with a budget or are we good? Excellent. School committee website. I actually found way back, a year ago, Lori Costa-Klein had asked us to put up profiles. And so, I actually had found...
Thank you.
The email about putting up bios on the website. And John had sent out an email to all of you, you weren't here, Linda, it was prior to you being nominated, but had sent out an email December 2nd of 2014, about a year ago, almost to the day, about profiles being requested. We never actually got those up. I don't believe everybody had an opportunity to write a bio. I think some people did, some didn't. But I wondered if, and I, I believe Summer may have been approached again about this, if you would be interested in doing some sort of a small bio that we could post on the school committee website. I know most people didn't seem to want a photo up, which I...
That's Casey.
Yeah, I'm with you on that one.
That'll get...
Yeah. But if you wanted to put together a bio and we could put something small up, the other school committees, I have to say, don't have anything like that in our district, but many other school committees throughout the state have it. In all four districts, there isn't any other school committee that has it, so I can't refer you to something as a, as a model. But I think, again, some of you may have written it, you may want to update it.
Do you still have it?
I, we weren't able to put, I didn't go through everything. I couldn't easily find it and Lisa couldn't easily find it, but we can do some more searching. Besides, I know the IT guy, he could probably help me find it because it was sent by email.
Well, since I did it, I'd like you to find it.
Okay, fair enough. I can find yours. Did anyone else think they did it?
I think I did it and sent it to John.
Okay, so I'll, I'll...
Or I can find it and I can do it again.
Okay, I'll check with our IT and see if we can locate... He's behind us. See if we can locate it by email. Because all, all emails are archived, so we should be able to find if you sent it as an email attachment, which I'm guessing you may have.
I think that I don't recall.
Okay. I remember at some point seeing Casey's, I don't have a clear memory of yours. But if you wanted to write something and then we could have that added to our website, if that's the school committee's pleasure.
I, I personally think it's a great idea. I just didn't do it last time. I'm just going to confess right now and I completely spaced about it. But I, and I also think that seeing as requests came from a parent, that, you know, but no, obviously, nobody's obligated to do that.
Okay.
Who the fire department's doing?
Why that?
Why do you need a fireman?
They do a, they do a fire every day.
Do they love? Yes, looking cute.
Okay, that's true.
They send photographs and everything.
Oh, that's fun.
It's a great idea.
Yeah, oh, that is great. Is it in the paper?
It's in, it's on the website, the Facebook page.
That's cute. Excellent.
And Lori asked about putting the, doing of our meetings, that's in, is there a place in that?
They're on YouTube, but they're not linked to the website, I don't believe, are they?
No, I think we can. Because we don't have any control of them. And they're not...
You mean like we don't have the copyright on it or something?
You can link the videos from the website. That's very simple. You couldn't have, maybe necessarily have the videos on the website, but you could have the link to YouTube for the videos.
That's not a bad idea, to have a little section on the drop-down menu or whatever.
I don't know how long they keep them up.
I don't either. We could link it maybe to the, the cable's website and maybe do it that way. We could have a link to the commit, the website of the, of the cable and then they could, they can find it from there.
Yeah, I think it's just, I mean, people don't know, you know, they don't know what the, the website is.
Sure. Okay, I can, I can see if we can do that.
Obviously, we don't have a lot of live attendance at these meetings and sometimes...
Sometimes we do.
But I, I have to tell you that people do watch us.
They do.
Yeah.
They do.
It would be nice if they could do it on a roll.
Because they come up.
Try to find it on cable.
I'm glad I did it.
Only one. You got me beat with that one.
Okay. I'd be happy to do that.
Everyone TV.
And then if you, if you could, you know, if you have an opportunity to do this, and I'll try to remember to add, keep this on the January agenda because people with the holidays don't get opportunity to do it.
Thank you for reminding us.
Yep. And digital privacy, the one thing, if I could just beforehand, I did just want to mention, we did have Dorothy Presser come from M.A.S.C. I thought she did a great job, a very nice presentation. And Summer and Casey were able to come and I didn't know, did you want to mention anything about it before I moved on? I apologize, I should have had on the agenda.
Oh, no, did we already hand out the, on the last meeting?
At the policy meeting?
Yeah.
Yes, we.
Oh, because we were going to talk.
We're going to, I think we need to talk.
I'm blurring lines.
Yeah. And this, so it was given to policy and I think the policy subcommittee needs to talk about it before we bring it to the full committee, but I don't mind. One of the things we did at our workshop was talk about meeting protocols and school committee goals and we had a.
Robust conversation?
An exercise where, you know, we talked about the hopes for the school committee meetings and the obstacles to it and, and, I'm sorry, but I put this together before the last policy meeting because Dorothy, the turnaround time was just too quick for our, because we met on a Thursday and I was like, oh yeah, we could get this passed down at our next policy meeting, which was Monday night. So I volunteered to put everything together and I still have all of that stuff I want to get to because I can't want it in my house, just so that the backup data is there for this. So, what we'd like to do is kind of, as the policy subcommittee, develop, you know, the meeting protocols that we can each bring back to our own committees to tweak, to create the template for the district and then bring it back. And I think that's the biggest piece because each of our committees in the district functions differently. And that's okay, but you know, we need, we're struggling, I think, in Halifax a little bit.
Yeah. A lot of it is protocols and norms.
Yeah.
You know, just sort of, you know, what are the goals of this committee? What are some ways to work together as a committee to all have the same objectives, the same goals? And what's the best way to get there?
Right.
And so she had some templates of different school committees, different documents that they've put together and they were really quite intriguing. So, we just gathered that and we can work on that as a policy subcommittee meeting after the holidays.
Yes, please.
Maybe somewhere in the middle of the budget season when we have more time.
Sorry. You don't want to be committed, Lisa, this year?
No, but it was, it was a good, it was a good beginning and.
Getting the ball rolling was good.
And good discussion. I thought it was a really good discussion, so.
Because you're right, some committees have strengths and.
Yeah.
Others have weaknesses, so if we can find a balance in between, that'd be great. I mean, we can't all have John Street, which is.
It's all true. It's all true. So, I was asked last month about putting together, Linda had asked about the Internet Use Acceptable Use Policy and I hadn't received any additional questions. I think you were going to email me with some specific questions if you had any and I didn't get any. So, we put this together, which I'm hoping will deal with what the, your basic question was. So, I'm going to do the presentation. Steve was kind enough to be here, but I didn't ask him to come up here because I think this document probably is very clear, which he was kind enough to put together for us. But if you have something beyond this, he's here for us. So, AUP stands for Acceptable Use Policy. I apologize, we have a tendency to use acronyms without even meaning to. I don't even, don't even see them until I start looking at them through somebody else's eyes. This is a summary of the Internet Acceptable Use Policy and Rules in the Halifax Elementary School Parent-Student Handbook. The handbook addresses three main, three main areas and then cover consequences. So the purpose of having Internet access for our students is to use for research, prepare and educate students to more effectively use electronic resources, establish a school web presence, and to facilitate communication. Email is mentioned in the Acceptable Use Policy, but elementary students do not have email access. Our secondary students have email access, but only to other S.L.R.S.D. addresses. It's very limited, okay? But not on the elementary level. In terms of the responsibility and the information, we monitor student use. We employ a filter to block objectionable content where possible and the filter works quite well. We've had students attempt to use it. We've had trying to use information, we might even wanted to look up something that we heard about, we can't look it up. So it works well, trust me on that. Because of the vast amount of material added to the web each day, our filter may not catch all of it. Parents and staff will provide additional guidance to students on appropriate use. In terms of our rules, there's no disclosure of personal information, no displaying offensive or threatening messages or pictures, no harassing others, no damaging equipment, no intentionally wasting resources, no using another person's password or accessing their work or files, and the systems will only be used to support the educational purpose of the school. In terms of consequences for the students if they break the rules, it may result in loss of access or other disciplinary or legal actions. And from the handbook, and I think this is a direct quote, "By sending both faculty and parents accept all financial and legal responsibility which may result from misuse of the Internet by the designated user. It is also understood that parents accept responsibility for providing guidance and conveying to their child acceptable standards for use of the Internet." I don't know exactly what your questions were, so we hoped this addressed it.
It's more of the, the apps that they're using in school and how privacy policies, what, you know, that they're using Brain Pop to, to, they get to the Brain Pop people, how much information they get about our kids, who the third party set. I looked up some of their privacy policies and their policies are all very different. So, I'm just worried about, you know, technology's changing so fast. And, I mean, we all, you download a new iTunes and the policy thing is this long and you just click yes and you go through. And when it comes to your kids, you start going, you start reading. And it seems like, just looking at some of these policy things, they're written, their business is trying to sell us stuff. And I just want to, I just was curious as to how we go about checking and what we know, like what data is being collected from our, from these people to our student and our parents' emails, all that personal information. So how does that work, like when we, when we want to use a new, a new thing like Brain Pop? How do we go about that?
We have contracts when we purchase something that we read through. Steve reads through it, Christine Haley reads through it, our business manager, that's what we always do. There's something called the Child Internet Protection Act, again acronym, C.I.P.A. We love acronyms, which, you know, are legal requirements. We always have to make sure we read through contracts with those in mind. There's also HEPA requirements, which are more for the medical, like with nursing, in terms of personal information for our students. We're very cognizant of that. We look at all the programs that we have, we look at the information that is required for the programs, and we don't always purchase or use all the programs that someone may be interested in because we don't believe it's in the best interest of our students. We are a small but mighty technology staff, and I do stress small. He's sitting there. So, you know, we really, we really don't have a lot of technology, but I can tell you, we are very cognizant of looking at those contracts, of making sure we know where that data is going. But, you know, there is, it is something, to your point, it changes, you know, you blink and you're on a different thing, you know? It was funny, at one point we were looking at something and it had IM in it, you know, instant messaging? I don't think anybody instant messages. You know what I mean? It's like, the world has changed so rapidly, you know? I never did in the first place, so I, you know, I'm just saying, but it's, you know, it's, it is changing rapidly. But we are very cognizant of the student data, where it's being used, but, you know, there's many levels. I mean, the state requires us to submit data all the time on our students, you know? It's just part of what we have to do as a public school system. You know, it's tied to many of those things. And then there's the private companies, which I think is probably more what you're asking. And we do really look at, like, look at them in sort of blocks, in terms of, okay, so these are curriculum, you know, programs that we want to use. These are the programs that, you know, we're interested in, we believe support our students, we believe will be of interest to our students. You may have used Study Island previously, you know, that was a program that, that had been very popular for quite a while, sort of timed out now. You know, we're switching to IXL. But when we look at those programs, we really look at, is this going to provide our students what we want? Is it giving the information that is needed so our students can access it, but no more? You know, like, they don't need their student's birthday, they don't need, you know what I mean? Like, we really look at those types of pieces. There are health and safety programs that we have to do. The nurses have information that has to be submitted snap, we have to collect it on them. There are things like, at the secondary level, it's called impact testing, concussion testing, very important, you know, that we do a baseline test for our students. Life touch, photos, you know? I mean, I know you may not think of that as health and safety, but having a child, a photo of every student in our building is really important. You know, God forbid, something happened, that's really important for us to have, like, immediately. There are programs that are like state reporting, which is EPMs and SIMs and civil rights, which are requirements. Food, cafeteria, neuter kits, you know, those types of things. So, you know, there's, there's some of those types of categories. So what we do as a district is we look at those different categories, we look at the programs, what our students have, and as we're building the budgets and as we're looking at them, those copyrights are really important to us, those contracts, not copyrights, I'm sorry, those contracts. So we do look at all that. It is involved, but again, luckily we have a small but mighty department that does a really nice job of working very hard and making sure we have that to be maintained.
The, like Brain Pop or whatnot, I don't, it's too, I looked at their policy, it's interesting, Brain Pop, you know, their policy, it's very sensitive, very, and they, you know, for them is that they say that if somebody requires their company, they have to adhere to their privacy policy. The other ones don't say that. And the, the extra math, their privacy policy, this is big, they are quite extensive, but their student, my Brain Pop, is Brain Pop and my Brain Pop? Do you know which one to use? Did you know there was two kinds?
No, I didn't know there was two kinds.
Brain Pop Junior.
Brain Pop Junior.
Right.
Brain Pop Junior.
This says Brain Pop without sharing any personal information, personal student data, while our schools can to enable my Brain Pop to be tracked by individual student learning. So I guess it's two different levels.
Brain Pop is a, is a website that teachers can access videos, learning videos. So it's, it sounds like the My Brain Pop is the, where the students have actual accounts. And I think that we only have the.
Students do not have.
We do not, yeah.
Yeah, we don't.
We don't have, we just have the, the one where the teachers access it.
And there was one that could be linked to Facebook. Is that through the Bell thing?
Through, through Brain Pop?
Yeah, they would kind of say.
It would be blocked through here.
Yeah, yeah, it would be blocked here.
They need to be blocked Facebook.
Yeah, yeah.
It's blocked.
They say that, you know, this is our policy, but if you go somewhere else, you know? We collect only personal information required for public educational use of our plays on job novels, this is job novel. For instance, we collect the email address of the face and challenge of the plays that they know. Similarly, we connect with Facebook or other social networks and utilize the minimum personal information from them to allow players to invite and interact with their friends, the plays under thirteen, computer pressed email, camera, blah, blah, blah. So I just, so maybe don't.
And be blocked.
Yeah.
Just, you know.
You know, I, I understand and I don't disagree that it's frightening. You know, all I can say is that we absolutely are diligent to the best of our ability and.
And we don't give out parents' email addresses to these.
No.
So I just.
No.
I just figure that, you know.
If, if, if they did, I'm sure you'd be inundated by now.
Well, that's.
So, we don't. You know, again, we're, yeah, yeah, exactly, no. You know, again, we are very cognizant of it. It is, I want to say it's a scary world out there, but there are many things out there. I was trying to stop not saying that sentence, but it's getting to be 10 o'clock, I'm getting tired. But it is, you know, again, I, I think, you know, this, this is pretty much how we're using the Internet. We do use due diligence, we are conscious of it, and I appreciate you bringing it up because a reminder never hurts. But, you know, again, Steve does a really nice job of reading the contracts. All contracts are always reviewed by Christine also in her spare time. So we, you know, we really do work our way through this to the best of our ability and we are conscious of it. You know, I, I always, any decision I make, I always try to, and again, that was sort of the MCAS part, I mean, to be honest with you, I can, I can see both sides of most everything. I truly can. And I, I try very hard to always think about, okay, if I was a parent, this was my child. You know, so I, that's how I function generally and I think it's really important. So thank you for bringing it up again. And we, we do try to. We do try to watch it.
They just tries, you know.
They absolutely are. I cannot tell you how many emails I get a day. Yeah. I, I get it more than I would ever care to admit, but, you know. Delete, 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 delete. We go through.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. That's all I had.
Okay. So, before we go into executive session, a couple of dates to remember. January, or no, December 24th through January 1st is our holiday vacation. January 4th, school reopens. It is also the date of our next school committee meeting, which is scheduled for 6:00 P.M.
Let's just move that.
Followed by special town meeting at 7:30. I would also like to note that I have set up a meeting with the finance committee for the 11th of January at 8:00, because I think it's important to keep lines of communication open between the town and the school committee during budget season. I don't know how long this meeting's going to last or what it's going to entail, but after we look at the first round of our budget, I think it would be prudent to have a discussion with the finance committee and see where they're at with our budget and how, you know, the feel from the town at that point, they'll be going through other departments' budgets and I just, I think it could be a beneficial discussion.
Just so you know, I'd be unable to attend with Kingston School Committee that night.
Okay. Okay. I tried to make it a night that worked for everybody.
Isn't that, isn't that Monday? Is that a Monday?
Yes.
Yeah, that's Kingston.
Okay. That's okay. That's okay.
It's a Monday, I'm generally not.
I can't imagine that this first round is going to be something that's going to be very nitpicky, but I just.
Take good notes.
Yeah, I will. And then going forward, obviously we'll make sure there's a date that works for everybody.
What time is that?
8:00. They have a finance committee meeting at 7:00, I believe, on that day, so I could be wrong, but Gordon and I, 8:00 seemed to work for us and if I hear anything different, I'll certainly let everyone know.
Is there a meeting?
Across the hall, across the street in the selectmen's meeting room. Whatever, at town hall.
No, we're not.
Go find it, sweetie, okay? You can meet us out there. But I'll confirm that and like, update everybody at the January school committee meeting. And it's actually my birthday that day, so I really don't want to see this.
You don't want to.
I just want to go out and drink after. Yeah, that's a hit, Bob. So with that, we should, am I missing any dates to remember that I need to?
Just the breakfast with Santa, can I say that one more time?
Sure. I don't, I didn't write it down. December 12th.
Yes.
December 12th and begin at 8:30 in the school cafeteria. Correct?
Yes.
In what?
The whole school.
Oh, okay.
The breakfast is in the cafeteria, the shopping is in another area.
Oh, you can shop in there? Oh, I thought it was just breakfast.
Yeah. It's shopping.
Oh, right, right, I see, okay, I remember that.
It's a wrap, it's.
So now we will adjourn the regular meeting to go into executive session for the purpose of.
Negotiations.
Negotiations, to return only to adjournment.
So.
Second.
All of the favor?
All of them.
Oh, yeah. Linda?
Say aye.
Yes, yes.
Yes, aye.
Casey?
Yes.
Robert?
Aye.
Excellent, thank you.